Welcome to our Fantastic 49 presentation for April. My name is Amy Matizik and I'm the Internal Communications Manager for School District 49. Tonight's presentation is a great reminder, I think, that it takes a village to operate our district and to educate students. There are staff in so many different roles, including volunteers too, that contribute in so many different but important ways. And I think every time I put together a Fantastic 49 presentation, it becomes very obvious of what makes District 49 fantastic, and that is our people. And you will meet a lot of those individuals tonight. For our honorees and those who nominated them, when your names are called, we'll have you first come up to the podium to make all comments, and then you'll head to the back to our photo backdrop where we will present a plaque and also take a number of photos that we will use in a number of different D-49 channels. So please keep an eye on social media as well as the website for that. And we do ask all of our honorees as well to stay for the full Fantastic 49 presentation so that our Board of Directors as well as senior leaders can congratulate each of you at the end. Before I introduce you to tonight's honorees, I would like to give a shout out to our Fantastic 49 sponsors because thanks to them, in addition to all of our honorees receiving a plaque, they will also receive a small token of appreciation. And tonight's honorees will receive a gift card for Dinner for Two to Texas Roadhouse. That always gets applause. Our first honoree for tonight is Destiny Williams, and she is the Lunch and Recession Monitor at Allies. Destiny goes above and beyond her duties as Lunch and Recession Monitor. She works hard to build relationships, to guide students, to help them become and be kind classmates, as well as just simply good human beings. It was Rebecca Thompson, the Director of Academic Services, who nominated Destiny for Fantastic 49. So at this time, I would like to bring up both Destiny and Rebecca.
Thank you. I am nominating this very special individual because she single-handedly ensures a safe, inclusive, and enjoyable environment for our Dragons every single day. Mrs. Destiny Williams works with our students in the cafeteria and on the playground each day, and her positive impact with our students allows the administration and staff at Allies to focus on the academic skills with all the time that they deserve. Children don't always come to school knowing how to get along, how to play safely, how to solve interpersonal problems, or even how to be honest when they make a mistake. For the past few years, Destiny has formed relationships with our students and helped to guide them in being honest citizens, kind classmates, and above all, respectful Dragons. Destiny doesn't just watch the cafeteria or walk the playground. Instead, she spends time building relationships and teaching our Dragons how to be just darn good humans. She uses patience and kindness and problem-solving skills when she sees that they are struggling, and she ensures that issues are solved on the spot and in the environment which they occur. This is an incredible gift to any school staff, and she may not even realize the love that we have for how she manages her role. We also secretly wonder if Destiny may have previously worked as a mail carrier because she seems to follow this oath: Neither snow, nor rain, nor heat, nor gloom of day stays this Lunch Recession Monitor from the most masterful completion of her appointed duty with our children. Destiny has allowed me to breathe a sigh of relief and find an inner calm each day as our students head off to lunch and recess. I know that my Dragons are in good hands, and I'm honored to have her working with our students at Allies. She makes Allies and District 49 an amazing place to learn, work, and lead.
Thank you, Rebecca. I'm honored and embarrassed, but thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to Destiny. We are so grateful for the love that she has for students and her role at Allies. Next up, we are going to celebrate two math teachers from Falcon Middle School, Cory Bates and Marcy Strunk. Cory and Marcy stepped up at a time when help was really needed. They helped fill in at Falcon Middle School when they had trouble filling a math teaching position. They did this to ensure the students would not fall behind. It was a parent as well as Christina Tiernan, the Coordinator of Math Performance, who nominated these two teachers. The parent couldn't be here tonight, but we do have Christina here with us. So at this time, I would like to invite up Christina as well as Cory and Marcy.
I wanted to just take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to both Marcy and Cory, who have graciously taken on additional classes during these last few months at Falcon Middle School. These two teachers have remained committed to their own students but have extended their support by stepping into other seventh-grade classrooms. I think at one time, Marcy was actually teaching approximately 200 students a day, and Cory is still teaching a seventh-grade classroom each day along with his eighth-grade classroom. Not only did they support academically, but they gave Falcon Middle School students the stability that they needed each and every day, and they continue to do that by reaching out to these other seventh-grade math students. Marcy and Cory, your dedication to go above and beyond for our Falcon Middle School students has not gone unnoticed. I appreciate all that you do every day, and I cannot thank you enough.
We do just want to say thank you, Christina. We don't do a lot of what we do for the recognition, but we do appreciate when we are recognized. And we do want to thank the parent as well that also nominated us.
And we would like to thank the admin and the staff, the parents, and the students of Falcon Middle School for helping us make it a great school.
Congratulations, and thank you again to Cory and Marcy for stepping up when they were really needed. They definitely made a difference for students at Falcon Middle Next, we are going to honor a community volunteer because we need those volunteers in District 49 as well. And she gives her time to Springs Ranch Elementary School. Her name is Pam Travanicek. And Pam is a volunteer who spends sometimes all day at school wherever she's needed. She helps students with projects, she makes copies, and when she is not assigned something, I hear that she just finds something to do. There was not one, but there was actually two teachers from Springs Ranch who nominated Pam for recognition. It was Nicole Jewell, the kindergarten teacher, and also Amanda Weiss, one of the fourth-grade teachers there. So at this time, I would like to bring up Nicole, Amanda, and of course Pam too.
Hello. I'm Amanda Weiss. I teach fourth grade at Springs Ranch. And as much as I'd like to say that I'm a Type A teacher who's always prepared and organized, I can't lie. I'm very much not that way. I'm the teacher that knows what I'm doing every day but then forgets the copies that I planned on making. So because of that, I can't just recognize Pam as an amazing volunteer because she definitely is that. You'd think she was a full-time employee at her school with as much time as she spends helping out. But she has to also be recognized for being a lifesaver. There has been many a day that she has saved mine. Whether making copies, helping me grade, or simply bringing me a smile to brighten up my day, Pam is always there to do what I didn't even know I needed. She doesn't even ask, she just shows up. She has taken not only me but my entire class under her wing. She eats lunch with them and holds a hand when someone needs it. And somehow, her kindness and love transcends every grade and extends to every person in our school. She isn't just a volunteer, she is truly part of the Springs Ranch family.
This is really high. I could just talk into it, it doesn't matter. It's above my head. Sorry. Vertically challenged. Here. Okay. When I first began teaching, I did not know, understand, or experience what it was like to have volunteers in my classroom. I quickly learned the impact they have in our D-49 community. Pam's help this year has lifted so many weights off my shoulders. As a kindergarten teacher, you plan more than necessary, you make more than necessary, and Pam is always there to step in paint, glitter, or otherwise. But it's so much more than the task and things that she helps with. It's the way all my students have connected and built a relationship with her. She is our Grandma Pam. It is also how she helps other teachers if asked and willingly jumps up to help. It's the way she kindly reminds me to eat lunch and not just to heat it up. She is the most selfless person I have had the pleasure to meet and work with. I am certainly a very lucky teacher to have her help.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you for this honor and thank Amanda and Nicole for nominating me. But the honor and recognition should really go to them and all the hard-working teachers out there. I volunteer for you guys so you can have a little more time with your families to enjoy the weekend a little more. I come from a family of teachers, my dad, my sister, my daughter, all teachers. My daughter, Abby Calderini, taught at Evans, Springs Ranch, and is now at Horizon. I have seen firsthand how much time away from the classroom they dedicate to better their students' education. Teachers are underpaid and underappreciated. They teach our future leaders what else could be more important. So here's to all the great teachers. They deserve all the recognition. I am thankful that I am able to volunteer and take a little of the work off their shoulders. And bonus, I get to see my granddaughters, Ava and me, at school. How fun is that? So thanks again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Pam, for being so generous with your time at Springs Ranch. District 49 is grateful for volunteers like you. Last, we are going to wrap up by honoring a team of staff members. They're a special education team from Evans Elementary. And the team serves students with significant supports needs, and the team includes Samantha Cosgrove, Shara Bethletta, Lindsay Hurley, Amanda Johnston, Marla Line, and Lauren Owens. This is a team that perseveres for the benefit of their students. They know how to balance care and compassion, making sure that students learn also about accountability and expectations. They have helped a lot of students make great strides. Tonight, you're going to hear what a building leader has to say about this team as well as some parents, and you're going to hear from one of their students. So it was the room's teacher, Samantha Cosgrove, that actually nominated the team, but it was their principal that said, no, the teacher needs to be honored too. So Marcia Case said, let's celebrate the whole team. So at this time, I would like to bring up Marcia as well as the entire SSN team from Evans Elementary.
All right, here we go. This is Room 50, the team from Room 50. And I have written up a few things about what a special place Room 50 is at Evans. It's amazing, and I'm inspired daily by the team who resides there. The SSN program is a core element of our school community and a proud piece of our identity. And the Incredible Team in Charge deserves all of the credit for the program's success. Every day, they display relentless work ethic and the most effective collaboration to best serve kids and families, and their joyful attitudes are contagious. It's no surprise that our kids are absolutely thriving in Room 50. Ms. Sammy, Cheryl, Marla, Lindsay, Amanda, and Lauren ensure that the essential components of a supportive and nurturing classroom are consistently provided without question day in and day out. Every student and family in their program is met with genuine acceptance and compassion balanced with high expectations and accountability. This team implementing that formula has launched their students to immense growth this year academically, socially, and behaviorally, and it's an absolute privilege to watch and learn from them. Our kids and families who are part of the SSN program are so lucky to have this strong and stable team of educators who love them unconditionally, challenge them to be the best versions of themselves, and celebrate every achievement along the way. These teammates, Room 50, and the amazing kids who are flourishing under their direction make me proud to be a part of Wildcat Nation. When I came to Evans four years ago, the SSN teacher position was a revolving door of different types of teachers. This group of paras stayed consistent under many different styles and levels of experience and knowledge of severe needs students. It was troublesome for them, but they refused to give up or abandon Room 50 because they knew the kids needed them more than ever. They persevered through some really tough times and overcame various and extreme challenges that each teacher transition presented. That level of commitment is admirable to say the least. And the result is that they have literally changed the lives of students and families who come through their program. The SSN students have taken major strides forward as individuals this year, and their families recognize and cherish the impact of this rock star team in Room 50. I'm really proud of them, and I reached out to our families and to our students to see what they would have to say. And so a lot of our parents had a lot of comments, and I'll get this all to you in writing because I'm not going to be able to share all of it, but I would like you to hear just a few snippets from the parents who were too shy to get up here. Our PTA president certainly chimed in as well. She talked about how they made small wish lists for every teacher and how Mrs. Cosgrove took the time to show her and the team how they work with board books and how they help their students with the creation of an adaptive library. Enzo, Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Enzo's mom said, "Enzo is learning with Mrs. Cosgrove and her whole team this semester. My son, Enzo, can be picky, and he has to be in the mood to do stuff." However, Ms. Cosgrove and her team pulled this big smile, and learning is fun. And of course, Enzo's up there too. Luca's mom wrote in and said, "I've been blessed with a wonderful and caring team of educators to accompany my son throughout his journey. There are not enough words to express how much I appreciate them all for their dedication, patience, commitment, and hard work they bring to the classroom every single day. It will never go unnoticed." And then we have a fourth-grade student who is going to join us today, and she's going to talk to us through the iPad that we have all set up. Her mom is Summer, and Summer doesn't love to be in the spotlight either. So she said, "These ladies are absolutely outstanding. They love my girl and want her to succeed. I can't say thanks enough." And then our superstar at Evans, this is Ms. Ashlyn.
Ashlyn uses an AAC device to communicate. So she worked with our speech therapist to pick some of her favorite things to say about everybody. Who are you going to do first? We're very shy.
I love Ms. Sammy because she is nice and silly.
Okay, who's next?
I love Ms. Cheryl because she is funny.
Who's next?
We really love Ms. Cheryl.
I love Ms. Lauren because she is fun.
Okay.
I love Ms. Amanda because she is smart.
I love Ms. Lindsay because she is hardworking.
And last one. Me.
I love Ms. Line because she is helpful.
So Ashlyn picked out all the words she wanted to say, and we programmed them on her device so she could tell everybody. And I have never seen her behave shyly. Who is it? I don't know. First of all, Ashlyn is never this shy. We don't know who this child is. So we stand before you today with a heartful of gratitude and pride on behalf of the entire Incredible Team, including our administrators. Winning this award is not just an honor but a testament to the dedication and love that we pour into work every single day. And I will tell you, today was a very challenging day for us, and we are all here with smiles. We accept this award with humility and gratitude, but let us remember our greatest reward lies not in the accolades or recognition, but in the countless moments of triumph, growth, and joy we witness in the children that we are privileged to support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. To everyone on that team from Evans, we appreciate what they do and how they make a difference for every learner. And congratulations again to all of our honorees, but before we wrap up, I would like to turn it over to the President of the Board of Education, Mrs. Lori Thompson, for final remarks.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I absolutely adore Fantastic 49, and I am so proud of the people who received awards tonight. And I did want to take a moment, and I was going to address this a little bit later, to say a sad farewell to Rebecca Thompson, who's going to be stepping down as the Principal of Allies. You have truly changed lives, and I wish you so much success in your retirement, and thank you for being part of such an incredible groundbreaking school.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, and thank you again to all of our honorees. We know it's individuals like the ones that you met that make District 49 fantastic. And that concludes our presentation.
We are going to take a 10-minute break and then start the meeting at 6:35 if the clocks are right. Welcome to the April 11th regular meeting of the D-49 Board of Education. Can I get a roll call, please?
Devalla?
Here.
Heil?
Here.
Livia Wright?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Thompson?
Here. I'd like to welcome everyone and ask if you could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Discussion?
I move to amend the agenda to move Information Item 8.1 and 8.3 to a Discussion Item.
Can I get a second? Second. Any other discussion? Vote?
Devalla?
Aye.
Heil?
No.
Livia Wright?
No.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
No. And that does not pass. We are on to public comment.
No ma'am, we need a vote to approve the agenda.
Can we vote on approval of the agenda?
Devalla?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes. We are on to public comment. We appreciate and welcome comments from our stakeholders as part of the District 49 Open Forum. Please remain in your seats until called to the podium by the Board of Education Chair. Once called, please approach the podium, state your name and relationship to the district before beginning. Please speak into the microphone. Written statements may be left in the basket by the podium. We ask that you not address anyone in the audience and that your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner. To fulfill our values of trust and respect, we decline to create a forum for attacks or criticism against specific staff members, students, or other stakeholders. Therefore, with the exception of members of the Board or the Superintendent, personal complaints against individuals connected with the school system are prohibited in this forum. Follow-up action items may be assigned to the Superintendent. In accordance with Policy BEDH, open forum participation is limited to two minutes per person. It is the practice of the Board of Education to withhold any comment or direction to the Superintendent until after all who have signed up for open forum have had a chance to speak. I would also like to make you aware of our Stakeholder Grievance Process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our D-49 community and guides the stakeholders through the correct people and process to help resolve their concern, including, as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the Board of Education. We encourage you to utilize this process, if warranted, as many have successfully resolved their concerns this way. Thank you for participating in open forum. And the first speaker will be Melissa Mayfield. Then, in the seats behind that, I would like Rihanna McDonald, Tom Hammer, and Ann Easton.
Good afternoon, school board members. My name is Melissa Mayfield, and I have served D-49 for the past 16 years in a variety of roles, including being an active community member, parent, teacher, and department chair. First, I want to thank VCT Subcommittee and everyone that worked diligently to make the new pay schedule. I'm very appreciative of the pay increase that has been proposed. As a department chair, I also value the clear and concise pay scale that is competitive. This is going to make hiring a lot easier. With that being said, I would like to address a concern that many of my teachers have. As I understand the pay schedule and how placement works, I will be placed on Step 19 while starting my 22nd year teaching. This means that if I, any teacher that I find to hire with 20 or 21 years' experience will be paid more than me, and they will also be receiving a $5,000 signing bonus because it is a hard-to-fill position. I have heard anecdotal data from a variety of teachers that they, too, will be slid back from their years of education and not match their step. I know there is a survey out there compiling these results, and I hope someone plans on sharing these results to you and district administration. Here is my issue. If we do not give current teachers steps for their years, but give new teachers steps for their years, this is a huge inequality and discrepancy which is impacting the culture of D-49. Trust me, I understand your problem. I'm a Math Department Chair at Sand Creek. Currently, I'm looking at hiring four teachers. Without a competitive pay scale, this hiring process becomes a very difficult task. The problem is the cost that the proposed schedule has to this current staff. Yes, I am hiring four teachers, but I am afraid that if you approve this, this number will increase. The perception by many school board, excuse me, by many staff members is that they are not valued for their years of dedication to D-49. Does D-49 value our current teachers? The current proposal shows us that new teachers and their years' experience are not valued, and that their years...
Thank you. Rhiannon McDonald?
Hello, my name is Rhiannon McDonald. I am a science teacher and the Life Science Team Lead at Sand Creek High School. You're going to hear probably, as Melissa was, from many more senior teachers in the district today, but I wanted to give my perspective as someone who is newer to the district. I have been a registered veterinary technician and educating veterinary medical professionals in math and science for about 15 years now. When I went back to school to become a secondary teacher, my steps started over. So right now, I'll be going into my fourth year as a secondary teacher. What that means is with the new step system, I will be reset to Step 1 because that is the closest to my current pay. That means that as a lead in my Life Science Team, the person who develops what we teach as our curriculum for our freshman students and beyond, I will be the lowest-paid member of the Science Team, lower even than those who have less teaching experience than me. And because of that, I just want to make it clear that even for people who are new and starting their careers in the district, if we've already been hired instead of being on the level that matches our years, as new people joining our team would be, we are reset to a point that can be well below that, which becomes a bit of a bitter pill to swallow, even as we are driven to continue to serve and do better with our school and start new programs. So I appreciate your time and consideration in understanding that there are many potential consequences to the way that we implement the program. So I appreciate your time and consideration in understanding that there are many potential consequences to the way that we implement the pay scale, but not the pay scale itself. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next up will be Ann Easton, and if Ivy Lu, Sue Beal, Gerald Leroy Kramer, Annette Yaba, and John Graham could take the seats.
Hi, my name is Ann Easton, and I am a former special education teacher in D-49. I'm interested in addressing the information on the IJ-R-3, the Library and Classroom Book Protocols for Collection, Curation, and Clearance. After listening to the work session about this topic, it seems to me that the entire topic is missing the boat. There was a hint of conversation on books that should not be in educational libraries because of their subject matter, but it didn't really address the issues of books that are sexually charged, sexually explicit, or address gender grooming. This policy is dancing around the topic without addressing it at all. The initiative misses the boat to the point that the boat isn't even in the harbor. The whitewashing is so thick, there's no longer any color to the fence. I wish Bill Saulwell was here tonight. He is in their community, and he has a list of thousands of books he found in D-49 that fall into the categories of books that should be flagged as inappropriate for any school library. These books aren't what should be banned, that's not the issue, but they should not be in libraries where academics are taught, where academics are stressed, where academic subjects, subject matter learning is or should be taking place. I'm here to raise the concern that this policy ignores books found in this district that fall into these disgusting categories, and there is not one mention of protecting our students from these books. Thank you.
Thank you. Ivy Lu.
I believe you missed Tom Hamner. Yes.
You're right, Tom, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's not the first time, Lori.
Know what, it won't be the last either.
You're probably right. My name's Tom Hamner, and for many years, our country's been protected by the Constitution. It seems that D-49 has lost track of what the Constitution means to our children's education. As an attorney and as a superintendent, your record should be successful, but they're not. It's apparent to me that in the combined almost 30 years of being involved in this district, scores have dropped. You expect my child, who's sitting right there, to graduate with a 27% proficiency in math? That's not successful as a business person. It's not. 52% graduation rate in D-49. That's terrible. That's a failure. 48% in reading, and you think that these kids are going to go out and be everything they can be? Only a select few with numbers like that. You came into this district not even able to sustain a small population of children in school, Mr. Superintendent, and for the last many years you've been here, the scores have continued to drop. And I'm free to tell you that that's unacceptable. My child will succeed and hopefully will replace the people that are causing the failure within the next couple of years and stop extending the torment. For anybody that goes to church and you can't be asked a question without grabbing security, you should be ashamed of yourself, and you should apologize to the congregation for your actions and the willingness not to speak the truth about your record of voting. Liberty will live on. Thank you.
Ivy Lu.
And one last thing, those who will not be governed by God will...
Ivy Lu.
So I'm in full support of the teachers' concerns. It is a joke that a superintendent, an employee of the Board, has the nerve to berate two of our Board members who suggest that we move money around in the district to pay teachers more. That needs to stop. The D-49 community is getting sick and tired of what's going on in D-49. Information channels have been activated to let everyone know what the district has been hiding from them, from the horrible academic scores to the social justice warriors and programs that we're putting into the district such as the renamed, craftily renamed Student Leadership Course that is scripted right out of the Marxist playbook. The community would know how D-49 is brazenly pushing the Trevor Project, which is a hotline inhabited by pedophiles that pushes transgender ideologies on children without parental consent. Did we know about this? The superintendent and the Board knew about it. John Graham knew about it. They lied about the existence of it and neglected to abolish it. You five belong in jail. That includes you. Call security on me? I profoundly apologize to the community that the Board, at the time when this happened, did not take a single action about a superintendent who publicly declared his loyalty to the criminal BLM movement while calling our country systemically racist. Yes, that's you, Mr. Hiltz. But the Board does take the time to persecute those who dare to speak out. You call yourselves Christian constitutional conservatives? Lori Thompson? Our children are not safe with you. Hashtag, put Graham Thompson Van Marren in jail for crimes against children. And these two.
Order. May we adjourn? May we take a recess, please, Madam President? We're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're going to resume the meeting. Next up is Sue Beal.
Good evening. I am a concerned grandparent, very concerned. I don't want to speak long, we only have two minutes anyways. I just want to pose a question. I do not agree with SCL or CRT, as I believe it is, it encourages dysfunction and racism, which is supposedly to not be. My question that I pose is that you have a tax-paid lawyer to support these programs. We parents disagree with you, but we don't get a paid, tax-paid lawyer, do we? No, but you all do. Sorry, I don't mean to be, I'm not confrontational normally, but I'm sick of what's going on. I am so sick of it. I really think this program, we are speaking because it's our children, it's not your children, not at all. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to be angry. It is our children, not the school board's children. This process seems to be fixed against parents getting the words out. Just get rid of them. This, your job is to get the teachers to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. That's what I learned, I'm old. And to do math, history, science, period. We did not have social engineering when I was in school.
Gerald Leroy Kramer. And remember to state your relationship to the district.
By Whitney Houston, "I believe the children are the future, teach them well, and let them lead the way." What are we teaching them? Show them the beauty they possess inside. What are we showing them is not well. Give them a sense of pride and make it easier. The biblical definition of pride is the afternot, love of one's own excellence. This means that we should love ourselves and our accomplishments, but not to point where it becomes sinful. In fact, Scripture tells us that God opposes the proud, but gives grace to the humble. Let the children's lap for remind us of how we used to be. Everybody's searching for a hero, that's Jesus for me. People need someone to talk, to look up to. She says, "I never found anyone who fulfilled my needs. A lonely place to be, and only so I learned to depend on me." Sad words. This is truly sad statement, but it's a fact, because parents and governments, we allowed to take the truth of God's holy bibles out of schools, and parents aren't talking, taking their children to church, so we have no government, broken, lonely, and no self-identity. Suicide is attempts deaths among children has increased in the United States in the past decade. Ages 5 to 11, now this has got to stop. 3,600 children did suicide just this past year, and that's just not acceptable. I decided long ago never to walk alone in shadows. Acts 5:15 shows that everyone who walked in Peter's shadow was healed. If we could teach these kids who they are, we are children of God, and we must teach them, God, the truth of the children. If we fail, we succeed. At least I lived as I believed. What are we teaching the children? Is not identity in theirselves, our great I Am, our Jesus is our superhero. No matter what we take from me, they can't take away my dignity.
Thank you. Annette Yaba.
A D-49 resident taxpayer. Where is the courage from our leaders? We have a great-grandmother convicted for praying at the Capitol, just from praying and walking inside for 10 minutes. Yet she hasn't given up the fight. Yet here, we have leaders that run from questions and from embellishes stories to get sympathy and attention while calling on security. Times are tough and chaotic, and we need fighters, yet we get leaders that are quick to take money from the feds, which is actually us taxpayers, to support illegals in our state and in our schools. I thought we were, we were not a sanctuary city. This puts our kids' health at risk. It puts our kids' learning behind as we have these kids that don't speak English, slowing the learning process down. We need representation that actually cares about all our kids and the learning that they need to be prepared for the future marketplace and not social justice warriors.
John Graham.
John Graham, homeowner, taxpayer, and parent. He who continues in anger, strife, and bitter spirit has a taste of the air of hell. Saint Philip Niri. Today, I have a bunch of posters. I have the Declaration of Independence, and I have the Constitution of the United States that I donate to the school district. I have the Gettysburg Address. I have a quote from Reagan, "We are forever indebted to those who have given their lives that we may be free." I have Abraham Lincoln, "We the people are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow the men who would pervert the Constitution." George Washington, "If freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent we may be led, like sheep to the slaughter." One of my favorites from Thomas Jefferson, "No free man shall ever be debarred at the use of arms." If you don't want that, I'll take it back. Heard a lot of things from the noise, from the shadows. If you want almost 7,000 kids to be kicked out of high school, then close Goal Academy, because that 55% number is represented by over 2,000 students that attend Goal Academy. Only 1,000 of them graduated last year, 1,100 actually. The rest of them are going to graduate this year, and they're going to have almost a 90% graduation rate. Goal Academy is an alternative education campus, and it requires more time for those students to get their diploma. That's why that score is so low. We also ranked 50th of 3rd grade ELA in math in the state, and I know that's going to get better this year.
All right, let's restore order to this meeting. The views and opinions expressed in public forum are those of the commentators and do not necessarily represent official policy or positions of the District 49 or the Board of Education. I don't know if I got that part earlier, and like I said, I will make other mistakes because I am a human being. Okay, does anyone have an item they want pulled from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion for approval of consent agenda items?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Any discussion? Vote?
Devala.
Aye.
Hile.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye. And we are on to the superintendent update.
All right, thank you, Peter L., Superintendent. It feels like we just got back from spring break. We're actually eight days in. But there were some cool things that were happening. Those of us that were here over, here at this building over the break might have seen buses pulling up and taking children to a gifted education camp. And I just really want to acknowledge the work that Diane Neff is our coordinator and just the way that our district is increasing its commitment to gifted education. We had a pretty long history of letting gifted children, or failing to identify gifted children, and I'm really proud of how hard our educators are working, our gifted educators in particular. But it takes a whole team to identify different kinds of strengths. Some of them are academic, some of them are leadership, many of them are artistic or physical, kinesthetic, language. And I was really gratified and proud to see those students getting that opportunity in D-49 and not having to leave our district and go somewhere else. That is a great area of growth for D-49. Really proud of the people that are leading that. I'm also proud, and I also, I want to just call out two individuals who really are instrumental in helping us get CMAS up and running. I could spend a lot of time explaining to you how complex CMAS is, or I could just say, look at Jamie Lynn and see how relieved she is to be done administering CMAS. See? Visual aid, thank you, unscripted. But we have fantastic leadership from a coordinator of academic performance, Kathleen Gronis. Kathleen has a distinguished history with the district as a principal AP, and you're going to hear her name again later on in the spring. But she is personally responsible for helping us stay focused on the importance of CMAS, of preparation. We've done a lot of things differently this year, and she has really been our point person. She's our liaison to the state, and I am already excited. We haven't even finished taking the tests yet, and I'm already excited about what we're going to see in this spring. But she is ably supported by and partnered with Brent Buena, our ed tech specialist, who is making sure that all of these tests that we have to take on a computer platform require very precise and coordinated setup and high-capacity networks. And I just appreciate Kathleen and Brent. I don't think either of them are here tonight, but they're just doing everything we could ask of them as we come through this standardized testing season. There's a lot of other fun things going on. I won't, I won't tell you all of them, but if you go on our district Facebook page, you'll, you'll see principals making, making themselves look silly or doing whatever it takes to help students feel good and, and feel less stressed about the test so that they can perform at their best. And so those are, those are great things that are happening. If you, if you live in District 49, or if you have a mailing address in District 49, and I believe all board members have to, you will be getting a copy of the D-49 magazine in just a couple of days. It is hitting the outbound mailbox tomorrow, I believe. And so you should be seeing that right away. Fantastic edition, focuses on individuals across the district that are living out our mission to learn, work, and lead. And I, I could spend a lot of time complimenting our comm team. They are incredibly coordinated, they're gifted writers, they are, they are just fantastic at telling our story. And so I just would ask you to congratulate the comms team because by the next time you're together, the magazine will have kind of arrived and passed. So thank you, comms team, for what you do. This is one that really, really warmed my heart. It's been a few years since I had a daughter go to prom. But to be able to go to prom, you've got to look your best. That, that is a day to celebrate. It's super meaningful. And for some people, prom is an obstacle. Prom is not something they can participate in because it can be expensive, getting a dress, taking care of other expenses. And so I was incredibly proud of this dynamic. Sand Creek High School and their community liaison leader there, Lauren Stewart, advertised what Vista and Falcon were doing to collect and then distribute prom dresses. So I just think that's a great example of our schools, our high schools especially, acting in community, living out our values of care and respect, and helping many of our students have a night to remember and a night that they might not otherwise have been able to have and wouldn't, wouldn't have felt right to be there. And so just that, that prom dress exchange is, I think, a great example of the community's character. And then finally, I want to invite members of the board in this public setting to an event on Monday at Falcon High School. The lieutenant governor is going to be, has chosen the Falcon Zone and Falcon High School as a place to promote, just as you have, the month of the military child. And so we're going to have some great events happening there. Our students will be performing and proclaiming what it means that we're committed to the military child. And my favorite detail of all is that we are going to have, I think it's, is it six, Mr. Smith? Five or six mascots that are going to be there? And of course, we don't want them to be left out of the month of the military child. So we had to order them t-shirts for Purple Up. And when you're wearing a mascot outfit, you have to wear a 6XL t-shirt. So that might be the largest t-shirt I'll have ever seen, and I invite you to come and see it for yourself because it's going to be fantastic. Thank you very much. Happy to answer your questions as you may have them.
Okay, let's go on to board updates. Director Schmidt?
Yeah, I'm going to be short tonight. First of all, Bill and I had a lovely spring break and a wonderful Easter celebration, and we hope you all had a good spring break as well. I completed the youth mental health first aid course at Skyview, did a couple of online modules, and I am now certified in youth mental health first aid. I also took the time to meet with Mr. Trautemberg and Spencer to discuss and to try to understand the teacher pay schedule that we will be discussing later tonight. And that's pretty much keeping myself busy, so that's it.
Thank you. Director Hile?
So first, one bit of old business. I have to correct an announcement I made in my last board report last month regarding this Sand Creek High School mock trial team. I was so excited to find and report the good news from their performance that I failed to notice that one of the reports I was looking at was a year old. And naturally, that was the one I decided to share with everybody. So Bella Schulte won the inaugural courtroom journalism category last year. But this year, we had two top finishers. We had a second and a third. So I want to issue my congratulations out to Violet Carroll and Anna Mayfield. Well done. Thank you for applauding my screw-up. I attended the first meeting of the Long Range Facility Planning Committee. Lori and I have nominated ourselves as co-liaisons to it. It's going to be doing some really important and interesting work, looking at how we're going to, you know, keep our facilities maintained and how we're going to plan for growth as, you know, building boom continues in especially the eastern part of our district. So that's going to be really exciting, and I'm looking forward to working on that. So regarding the upcoming teacher schedule change, we've heard a number of, from another, number of people, and I just want to let you all know that I'm reading every single word. I have only directly responded to a couple of you. But I think that the information that you've been giving us, the perspectives, has been really informative. It's really been valuable. And, you know, I, I'm actually pleased that we are working on a real controversy rather than some of the manufactured controversies that get brought in here. I, I hope, I hope we'll, we'll be able to resolve everything to probably not everybody's satisfaction, but at least something that we can all live with. And on a final note, I am wearing my purple tonight in support of the month of the military child. I'm looking forward to our, our resolution tonight. And I'm also looking forward to learning, when we talk about that, how we got selected for the honor of hosting the state signing of the, of their proclamation on Monday morning. That's all I got.
Director Livia Wright?
Oh, I have a few things. First, Falcon Education Foundation's annual event is next Friday, so a week from tomorrow. So if you have not replied to Tammy Harold about whether or not you are attending, please do so because we have to get those seating charts done. And it's an incredible amount of work, and thank you to everyone who is supporting it. This is the major fundraiser that contributes both to grants to teachers to do amazing things for our kids and offer scholarships to our graduating seniors. Then the day after that is our Military Resource Fair, which District 49 is hosting, which is amazing. And we'll have not only resources for military families and veterans, but also lots of veteran-owned businesses in our community. So even if you are not a military-connected person right now, if you would like to help support veterans and military-connected families, you could also come to the Resource Fair and help support those businesses that are veteran-owned. Thank you so, so much. I think it's an amazing thing, and I think we're the only one in the region that's doing something like this. And as a military-connected spouse, I really appreciate it. Tomorrow night, Falcon High is having their meet and greet for the newly hired principal. I believe it, is it 5:30, Mr. Smith? Or is it five? 5:30 tomorrow night. You can come and meet Mr. O'Connor and get to know him, and welcome him to our district as we continue to show Falcon Nation pride. And the other thing I wanted to mention, so the wildfire that happened a week ago impacted a D-49 family. And I just want to say how amazing it has been to watch our community do what it always does, which is to step up and respond and support. Literally within 24 hours, I think folks were donating gift cards and showing up. And, I mean, it's, it's public because it's on multiple neighborhood Facebook pages that the family is, is open to receiving that support. They lost absolutely everything. And they are both connected as employees and as parents in our district. And I just want to thank our D-49 family community for doing what it does best and coming together to yet again support when we have a fellow family member in need. That's what I love about this community. We can say sometimes we're a dysfunctional family, but boy, we function as, when, when, when things hit, we really stand together and take care of one another in the district and in our community as a whole. And so thank you. I know it's impacting a lot more than just that family seeing that outpouring of support. I'm even hearing from kids and their parents who are friends of the student who lost their home and how much it's impacting them to also see this is what we do as a community as we stand together and we support when there's a need. So thank you.
Director Devala?
All right. For my board update, I just wanted to say to those teachers out there, stay strong through the CMAS testing season. Walking in circles for hours on end is quite tiring and exhausting, and I know what you're going through. But you are going to see the fruit of your labor, and I am super, super excited to see what those test results come out to be this next fall. And I have some, some real hope to see significant changes. Also, I am looking forward to attending several of the special events that are coming up here in April and in May, especially the 3.75 GPA dinners with our seniors who have achieved 3.75 or higher. That is an honor, and I'm, I'm very much looking forward to attending that, as many as I can. I probably won't make, make all of them, but I know next week is Vista Ridges, so I will, I will definitely be there. I am honored to be able to be a teacher and honored to, to be on this board and to help those of, those of us in this district who are working really hard to teach our kids every day. And I am, I am so blessed to be able to represent the people of our community. And I am looking forward to moving forward in the right direction, together and apart, behind the scenes, and at the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. As Director Hile referenced, we attended the Long Range Facility Planning Committee to get an update on projected rooftops, matriculation, future enrollment, and the state of our buildings. I also attended the Student Board of Representatives meeting, and I am so grateful for the guardian angel who always has a pot of coffee waiting for me. Our student board never ceases to amaze me, and it was really interesting to watch them debate the resolutions they have in process as well as interesting information about their schools. It is such a bright spot for me, and it really gives me hope for our future. You know, you've heard a lot of things tonight, and I got to tell you something. We've got some amazing kids in this district, and we have some fantastic teachers. Samantha Hollister is stepping down from her role slowly. She's still around there, and I'm so grateful for that, with the Special Education Advisory Council. Sam has dedicated thousands of hours of tireless volunteer work on behalf of otherly-abled students. She has helped facilitate the Inter-District Resource Fair to provide resources for not only special education students, but also for adults. Last but not least, for those of you who are here for Fantastic 49, Rebecca Thompson, the principal of Allies, has decided to retire. This incredible school has been copied in numerous forms across the country. The gift to students with dyslexia has flourished under the leadership of Rebecca Thompson, and she has truly helped to change lives. And that's all I have right now as far as my board report, but I have a couple of administration things that I'd like to discuss. I won't need that, but that's good. The first thing is that we did a resolution. We were opposing some of the state's overreach on local control for school security. And House bill, let's see if I have the name of it here. I think it was HB 24-1310 has been withdrawn. And so I'm very excited that they are going to choose at this time to leave local control of school security at the local level instead of an overreach from the state. Yes. The other thing I'd like to address is I've heard something that is so blatantly untrue that I wanted to address it. It is true that I had a man approach me on Easter Sunday outside of my church. He was a volunteer greeter, and he wanted to discuss my voting record. And I asked him to specify which votes he was referring to. He did not. I also asked him to participate in a, in a process that my church has called the Covenant of Harmony, and it's based on Matthew 18:15 through 17. This gentleman declined to meet with me and a pastor to resolve any issues. I did not call security on anyone. I left the service early to avoid any trouble, and I asked a friend of mine from my small group to have us escorted to our car so there would not be any trouble. So any allegations that I called security on anyone is a lie. So it's a shame tonight that we started with the joy of Fantastic 49, and then we ended with a lot of information. Now, I can tell you that there's a lot of propaganda and things that are not true, and they catch on like wildfire. And so what I encourage you to do is if you have questions, submit your questions to the board. Ask the questions instead of throwing out allegations. And I would like to defer to Mr. Hiltz, if he doesn't mind if I catch you off-guard. I would like you to talk about graduation rates. Because currently, we charter Goal Academy, which is a statewide alternative high school. Less than 5% of those students live in El Paso County. 95% of them are across the state, and this is a high school of last resort. This is for kids who may have gotten pregnant and had a baby. They are for the working poor, they are for foster kids. They are for kids who could not, for whatever reason, thrive in a traditional high school. And this is their last opportunity to obtain a high school diploma. Now, this statewide program does pull down our graduation rates if you lump in the graduation rates of Goal Academy with our brick and mortar schools. And I want to state that I am proud of Goal Academy. And if you ever attend one of those graduations, which of those graduations, which I've never seen some of the naysayers actually attend a Goal graduation and see what this program does to help change change lives. So if you say you care about kids, then you have to care about all kids, including those who are in foster care, including those who may not have had the same situation or privileges that some of us have had. So, would you mind, Mr. Hiltz, talking about graduation rates between our brick-and-mortar schools and Goal Academy?
I'll just say briefly, I think recapitulate what you already said. Goal has over 6,000 students. That's more than all of our other high schools combined. Educationally speaking, Goal is like an emergency room, and so comparing emergency room intensive care students with the general population is is going to skew your results. And we understand that. If I was a hospital administrator, I wouldn't want to compare my natal wing with my emergency department. You'd have you'd have very skewed statistics. Our schools graduate well above our district average. So when you go to Falcon and you see above 90%, Sand Creek, Vista Ridge, Spring Studio, Pike's Peak, Early College, all of those schools are above 90%. This is well-known. So by including Goal, which is an intensive care school, and lumping that in, we understand that. We understand we're going to be subject to those those accusations and criticisms. It's worth doing it. When I see a young man walk across the stage carrying his baby, that's a baby that didn't get aborted. That's a baby that didn't get abandoned. That's a baby that didn't get given up on. And the reason that baby didn't get given up on is because that young man didn't get given up on. I think that's atrocious grammar, but it's emotionally right. And we see moms come across that stage with a baby in their arms and a baby walking. We see grandmothers come across that stage because Goal gives a free high school GED program to the parent of any child who is enrolled. And I will retire with our support for Goal Academy as one of my proudest achievements. I will make no apologies for helping children have a second or third shot at life. I'm a foster parent. I'm an adoptive parent. I'm a grandparent, and I'm a great-grandparent. And all of those generations of kids that we've spent our lives helping, they deserve every bit of our support. So you can criticize me all day long for a 50% graduation rate, and when you're willing to come with me and tell those Goal students that they don't deserve the same love and care and support, then I'll start to take you seriously.
Okay. Can I get a motion for Action Item 7.1, Peer Partner Program?
I move to approve the Peer Partner Program at Falcon High School.
Second.
Do we have any discussion about this? Okay, can I get a vote?
Devola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that motion passes. Next up, we have 7.2, Teacher Appreciation Work Proclamation. I know, interesting timing. Can I get a motion for 7.2, Teacher Appreciation Work Proclamation?
I'm sorry, Madam President, I have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I move to approve the attached proclamation declaring Teacher Appreciation Week, which reads as follows. Teacher Appreciation Week Honorable Proclamation, May 6th to 10th, 2024. Whereas District 49 teachers are an essential part of this district's education system, and whereas teachers are dedicated to providing a quality education for the students of District 49, and whereas it is appropriate for District 49 to recognize the role teachers hold in our education system and to salute them for the valuable service they provide to our students and to our community, now therefore, we, the District 49 Board of Education, proclaim May 6th through 10th, 2024, Teacher Appreciation Week.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have kind of a random observation. I feel it's pretty interesting that we are passing a teacher appreciation resolution at the very same meeting where we are discussing the teacher's pay schedule. I've been in the district for 25 years. I remember multiple superintendent buyouts, millions of dollars going into the pockets of outgoing administrators, which effectively removed any possibility of even a few thousand dollars going into teachers' pockets. I remember staff layoffs in the early 20 teens, leaving some teachers to find other work. I remember at least four changes to state standardized tests that teachers had to adapt to quickly and efficiently. And I remember our teachers pouring their souls into instruction for our students during COVID. Now, I love Fantastic 49, and I'm not dissing on that tradition, but I think sometimes because we do Fantastic 49, that all our thanks are kind of covered, kind of a rote lip service. I also think that Fantastic 49 also allows us to kind of take for granted things like those four items I just mentioned a minute ago. I think that today, we have an amazing opportunity to discuss what teacher appreciation really means. I want to thank you, present teachers, past teachers, and future teachers, for all that you give to our kids and our country. Thank you.
Director Heil?
You know, I understand that there's a lot of emotion right now around the proposed pay schedule, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the administration has found $7.5 million worth of additional funding specifically for salaries. The largest percentage increase and total sum is being directed toward teachers. So however that ends up being distributed and implemented, please know that we understand your value to this district, how critical you are, and by moving forward with this, we are trying to put action behind. It's not just words. So, thank you so much for everything you do.
And just a quick reminder, we're going to have that discussion a little bit later, but I understand that it was brought up. So would anyone else like to weigh in on a Teachers Appreciation Week? Director Devola?
Yes, as a teacher, this is one of my favorite weeks because it's amazing, the contributions that are sent to each school, how parents get involved and support those teachers and bring things such as food and gift cards, and they really pour their heart and their soul out into honoring teachers for a specific week. And so, I just want to say thank you to all of our D-49 teachers. This is well-deserved. I wholeheartedly support our Teacher Appreciation Week, especially when it comes, the first week of May, after CMAS testing and right when you're getting into the graduation season. It's very, very important that we recognize all the hard work that our teachers are doing.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, can we vote on the resolution?
Devola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that one passes. Okay. Can I get a motion for Item 7.3, Lead Facilities Equipment Job Description?
I move to approve the Lead Facilities Equipment Technician Job Description as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Devola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for Item 7.4, Regulation IJ-R-3?
I move to approve the Regulation IJ-R-3 as recommended by administration.
Second.
Any discussion? I do have a question, because typically, we don't vote on regulations, but it's good to have the input. Is there any discussion? Director Schmidt?
You have a little bit to say on this one. If we are truly going to value all people, maybe we should be considering parents and community in a more comprehensive way regarding the collection and curation of books. Even though both parents and community values are mentioned in the proposal, it seems that parents and community ideas are not really being given enough weight. Though one parent is on each committee, in the end, a district building administrator makes the decision which books to place on the shelves. Also, sometimes there is more than one book with the same title that has totally different authors and totally different content. We had one recent case that was brought to light where there were three books with the same title but had completely different content. Fortunately, D-49 only had an article from the book with merit. What if the collection committee inadvertently chooses the wrong one of these? That is important, and it is not included in this regulation. The regulation also states that the collection team is assuming that any book in the school's collection is an appropriate resource for any student in the school. However, a parent may feel differently, but not even know that a specific title is available to their child. Parents can prohibit their child from access to any book, but again, how does a parent know what is on the shelf? There is no easy way for a parent to find that information, given their busy schedules. That aspect is not covered in this proposed regulation either, and please correct me if I'm wrong. In regard to the SCOTUS decisions that Superintendent Hiltz referred to in his explanation of the regulation, I was only able to quickly scan those decisions. But on that quick scan, it seemed those cases regarded free speech, fair use, grandparent visitation, student use of obscenities, and abortion and health care. So I'm not really understanding how those topics correlate with library books. So any further explanation would be good. I do have one small thing, if I can finish. We should be considering possibly waiting on approving this regulation in order to include some things that were left out, as well as to take the time to ask our community how they feel about the district making final decisions regarding collection and curation. Thank you.
Director Heil?
I just want to address that last point, because the committee that gave the feedback that went into this regulation was made up of a lot of teachers and a lot of community members. So I feel like they've already weighed in.
Director Devola?
I know this regulation actually came out as a preventative measure, considering all of our, all of the, what do you call it? Fireworks, I guess, that are happening in surrounding districts when it comes to very inappropriate materials and books that have been on the shelves of like District 20, District 11, et cetera. And so, as part of a preventative measure, this actually became part of the team in order for us to cull out books that may be very questionable, so that we do not have books in our libraries that go against values of parents. And if parents are concerned about these, any of the book titles or any of the things that we have on our shelves, we do have a process to go through, and we can cull those out and make sure that we are protecting our kids. My number one goal is to make sure we don't have any of those very questionable library materials on any of our shelves. And so, with that being said, I do believe there's a few things that are lacking in this regulation, one of them being a way to notify the Board of Final Approval. I also think parents should have access to the list of books that their children check out. I know that would be, it would cost money in order for us to be able to have access to the library system and notify parents, hey, this is the list of books that your kids have checked out, just as a cautionary extra step in protecting our kids.
Madam President, may I make a?
Director Livia Wright?
Thank you. As a parent of current students in current D-49 schools, literally, all I currently have to do is walk up to the librarian and say, can you print me a list of books my kids have? I know this because I still have two in the district attending D-49. Well, one attends traditional D-49, and one is in a charter. And that's been my experience in the entire now 16 years, I believe, that I've had students in D-49 is literally all I have to do is walk into the school, the parent, or even now, in the land of email, I email them and say, hey, curious what Adam has this week, mainly because he loses books, and I end up having to pay for them more than anything else, so I need to know what to look for in my house. And they say, sure. They type in my kid's name and they send it. So for parents who are concerned, we already have that mechanism without having to spend a whole lot of money. We just have to be willing to ask the question.
Ms. Thompson, may I make just one quick observation? Because when we discussed this last time, I said that I would research whether or not Fall at Destiny provided that opportunity. And what I what I learned is that they began to develop it. They decided it was both technically too challenging and that it was likely to create legal challenges, and so they abandoned the effort to create a parent login oversight system. I have not been able to locate another provider that scales. There are not many of these kinds of library systems out there. I've not been able to locate one that would provide the kind of online, kind of instant real-time access for parents to digitally look over their child's shoulder. We can do that in person, and the librarian has that access, but we don't have a technical solution that would allow that. And so, I told you that I would research that. I've researched that, and that's what I've learned.
And then just a technicality on this one. It says that when it comes to regulations, that we can take a vote on it. I don't know if it's the same as approved, but I wanted to know, as far as regulations, which are typically within the domain of the superintendent, whether or not it's just a vote that, okay, we're in favor of, because we've always had discussion on them.
Well, Brad Miller speaking. Listen, it's, it really is, we've delegated to our superintendent the role of adopting regulations, but in this case, I think it was a matter of broad interest, and so it's on our agenda, and I think it's appropriate to go ahead and take a vote.
And I wanted to know, Superintendent Hiltz, how many, do you know, and you may not know the answer, I don't mean to bushwhack you here, but how many parents have filed book challenges in our schools, just say, over the past year?
I know that over the past two years, the number is zero. We had the COVID year. I don't have data there. I don't remember any during COVID, but I know for sure the last two years, we've had zero.
My only thought on this is we have been so proactive, and for a lot of people, this is a new hot topic. But this is something that I know I personally have discussed with you and worked with you on for two years. We do have a controversial materials policy. I think we also have a book challenge policy that we recently updated, and we have been working over this issue. We have had exactly what Director Schmidt referred to, that there was a book that they thought was very salacious, and it turns out, it was an article with the same title, and it was a story about a woman who was the sole survivor of a plane that plummeted 30,000 feet. It was very inspirational. I actually took the time to read the article, and it was really interesting. So here we have an article called "The Girl Who Fell From the Sky," which was the same as a book title, which contained a lot of interesting content. So, we've also found multiple times that books they said we had in our district, we did not have in our district. So, I know that I used to go through my kids' backpacks, and I always knew what books they checked out. So if you are concerned too about grooming or children being sexualized, I can tell you right now, the number one source of that is right here. It's their online behavior. It's cell phones. And one thing I hope to put forward soon, as we talked about, I've discussed, I would like to propose sometime in the future that we have parent universities to talk about online safety. In the past, we talked about the creepy guy with the white van who was lurking around schools. I can tell you, he now lives here, or she. And so, I know that Director Livia Wright had told me about cell And so I know that Director Lavier Wright had told me about a cellphone where the parents can monitor, there's supposed to be pre-screened apps, I heard about another one. And so you might see the bundle deal at a local cellphone provider, but I would like to put together as a community resource, cell phones that look like smartphones where parents have complete control. They can turn off the camera, they can determine what apps can be opened. And so I would like to say that I like this proposal because once again, we are moving forward with another regulation which will screen the books that we receive. There will be committees to look at the books we have, and it's another layer of protection. It may not be perfect yet, but the good news is that's something that we can also amend as we get more either technology or more information to move forward. So that's all I have.
Do you want to know the brands of the phones?
Yeah, go ahead.
There's two currently that give parents that level of control. Pinwheel, you check them out on pinwheel.com. They are designed by mental health professionals who are teaching children that phones are tools, not toys, and they give you complete control of even what apps your children can see are available and control over who can call it. Bark has also come out with their own phone that does the same thing, both of which are designed with their own operating system so that kids can't get around your parental controls and monitoring apps. So they're designed for younger children or kids who are high-risk, based on the way that technology has moved. They're both fairly new and doing really awesome work for kids.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, let's vote.
DeVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Thompson?
Aye. And that passes. Can I get a motion for item 7.5, D-49 recognition, month of the military child?
I move to approve the proclamation for the month of the military child, which reads as following: Proclamation declaring April the month of the military child in District 49. District 49 recognizes the sacrifices and applauds the courage displayed by military children by celebrating all military children during the month of April. And our district staff members understand each day military children undergo unique challenges, to include long separation from parents or guardians who deploy near and far, and our district staff members support the positive growth and development of the children of military members with the knowledge that success of children directly impacts resilience and readiness of the entire military family. And our support of the children of military families helps the men and women in uniform successfully fulfill their mission of serving our state and nation. And our work as members of our district and community aids in improving the lives of military children and their families. Therefore, we, the Board of Education of District 49, proclaim our recognition of the month of April as the month of the military child. We invite and strongly encourage all members of our school community to take time to recognize military children and their families.
Second. Discussion? Director Heil?
So I asked this question rhetorically, planning to giving you, give you an opportunity to provide the story. When I asked it, a community member heard it and emailed me a little bit of the story, but I'm hoping you'll tell us anyway. How did we land Lieutenant Governor in our own school district signing the state proclamation?
I'm just really short. I'm going to give a short answer. The short answer is honestly our partnerships that we have, both within the district and outside of the district. I'm here, again, with my two close colleagues, Jackie Wickham from Peterson and Abby Hahn from Shreve, and we work together really closely. If I'm working with a student, I call them. If it's something I need to call them in, they call me in on kids that are coming into D-49. And we, I have seen posts on Facebook of families who have chosen D-49 as their residents because they can connect with me, and then I can connect them with the wide network of support systems within D-49. And to a person, all of those people have been responsive, immediate, providing great information and helping these families find their place here in D-49. So it's partnerships, really, that's what it was. And so we all worked together, and the lieutenant governor was looking for a place to sign this proclamation, and she came to the school liaisons, and they said, D-49. And I chose Falcon High because they have a great Space Force JROTC that's super active. They just got a nation or a national ranking, and I feel like there's, you know, I'm doing my event on the 20th at Vista Ridge, there's a lot of things that happen at Sand Creek, and I feel like Falcon just kind of is out there, and so it's not always convenient for these big events that we put on, and I wanted to make sure that we highlight Falcon as well.
So this community member told, specifically called out Abigail Hahn, Shreve, Space Force Base School Liaison, as the primary advocate who reached out to the state and said, no, you need to have it here in D-49. And that says tremendous things about your program, right? That it's the military folks who are saying, now, D-49 is where you want to do this. So thank you.
Falcon High also has historically been recognized nationally for its support of military families and the development of their student-to-student program. They actually had the Director of Education from the feds come. Arnie Duncan came to Falcon High to recognize that program personally. So Falcon High has a great tradition of supporting military families, including mine.
And I have to make a confession. I said to my husband, what is the name of our lieutenant governor? And he goes, I don't know. So I Googled, so you can probably guess how I voted last time.
It's all right.
Okay.
This particular event is not political. It is all about supporting our military kids, so I don't judge you at all.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, can we vote?
DeVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye. And that passes. And from what I understand, you want us to come sign the big bill.
Do you mind doing that? I'm so excited.
So I will need Director Lavier Wright to come with me as we sign the blackboard.
Do you guys have your pens with you? I was supposed to get a big pen at Walmart today, but I spent, I've spent the last six hours sorting purple t-shirts, so I didn't get there. I apologize.
As a recipient of one of those t-shirts, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Actually, it's Desiree, who's one of our DODIA grant managers, who made all that possible, so I'm really excited for that as well. Oh, thank you. And this will come with me to any of our events across the district, so families can see your support and the district's support.
Can I get a motion for item 7.6, Policy and Procedure Review?
After a first reading at the previous meeting, I move to approve the proposed revisions to the three policies listed as recommended by the administration.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
DeVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye. And that one passes. And we are on to information items, 8.1, Falcon Middle School.
We didn't vote, we didn't vote for that.
See, I'm going to keep making mistakes as we go along, and I'll hopefully get better as time goes on. Okay, discussion items. The first one, 9.1, Patriot High School Integrated Math. I can't even say the word. Right here, we have a presentation. Are you guys drawing straws over there? Or is it rock, paper, scissors?
I thought she said she was going to introduce us.
Do I just start talking?
I just start talking.
Ryan Bailey, Principal High School. Hi, I'm Ryan Bailey, principal at Patriot High School. I'm joined here by our math, our entire math department. You can introduce yourselves.
I'm Deirdre Binkley-Jones. I've been at Patriot for three years, and I teach math.
I'm Tiffany Cabrera. Been a Patriot for two years, and I also teach math.
Awesome. We're here today to discuss the proposal of integrated math curriculum and courses at Patriot High School. And so that is something that we're pretty passionate about, making sure our students have the supports that they need and the courses that they need. Patriot High School serves students who have struggled in a traditional school setting, and so we're here to make sure that they have all the support, resources that they need. So there are two basic general high school math programs. You have the AGA sequence, Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II, and you have Integrated Math. And the, I would say, the country is pretty split on which one they use. We are hoping to use Integrated Math, and for a variety of reasons, as you can see in our proposal, but a couple that I'll just highlight, and then I'll open it up to questions from you all. As a school that serves students who struggle in a traditional setting, many students come to us credit deficient with the varying levels of skills in math. And the Integrated Math focuses more on skills as opposed to content. And so students would be able to come in, and we'd be able to place them a little more accurately based on their skills in the appropriate sequence of classes, so Integrated Math 1, 2, or 3. We feel that this model will provide more opportunities to place those students based on their skills, and also allow students to focus on their skills a little bit more within each of the contents, Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II. So there's more skills-based versus content-based, and our SAT has had more this year of geometry in it than algebra. Historically, our school has done Algebra I over two years because that has supported our students, but unfortunately, that means that we're not always getting to all the content before they take the SAT. And so this model would allow us to focus on those skills necessary for success at a more appropriate rate. So that's kind of what we're focused on. We have opened up for any questions that you all have for us.
Director Heil?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, you guys are serving a very different population than most schools, and so taking a different approach seems like absolutely the correct, the correct direction, and that's for two reasons. Number one, you're probably serving some students who have some exposure, but maybe didn't earn the credits for whatever reason. And so again, as you said, they're going to be very uneven in their skills. But also, I like the idea here that there's acceleration, that, you know, for the right students, that's going to be hugely beneficial, because we're talking about students who are credit deficient, and this gives them an opportunity, at least in math, to get to where they need to be on time and maybe graduate after four years. So I'm very supportive of what you're doing here. Thank you.
Director Lavier Wright?
I actually like it for a slightly different reason. It really is about the types of curriculum that are offered at Patriot. Patriot is very career and technical focused, and I think the integrated math approach works in a practical way with CTE education differently than in algebra, than geometry, than Algebra II would. So if you're working in the construction program, for example, getting some of that geometry right is incredibly important, so your wall's square, and knowing how to do the basic algebra equation that goes with that geometry is important. And if you're not getting that till year three, when you're trying to learn to build something, start in year one, because not everybody who goes to Patriot is credit deficient either. There are students increasingly choosing Patriot because of those career and technical education pathways that we are growing there. So I think it will serve students who learn that way best and who are interested in those trades better than the traditional program will as well, and so I'm looking forward to seeing you implement it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director DeVola?
Yes, at the elementary school level, we always make sure to integrate things constantly because we know that students lose learning over time. And so having this at the high school level where they're, they're having to do both geometry and algebra integrated, actually will have better results with retention. I know as my, as a student, taking Algebra I, then geometry, and then Algebra II was quite difficult for me when I was in classes such as physics, and I was in geometry, and I needed Algebra II to really understand physics. And I just remember the, the heartache that I had in order to get through that. And learning is cyclical, so if you, if you teach something, you have to come back to it, and you have to come back to it again, and then you come back to it again. But that whole year makes a huge impact, and so I would actually prefer that in all of our schools, not necessarily just this one, because we know that repetition leads to learning, and there's a lot of learning loss in that year.
Thank you.
The comment I have is a little bit, it ties in with the CTE, what you're doing at Patriot High School. A lot of people do not understand what an alternative school actually is. They do not understand how kids can learn differently, how bright some of these kids are, how innovative some of these kids are, and you guys already know how exceptional some of these kids are. And just like a brick and mortar schools, or the, which it is a brick and mortar school, but our other schools, there's a few that are, you know, a pain in the butt too. But the bottom line is, is that I just wanted to give you kudos for meeting the kids where they're, they're at, and finding where they fit within the integrated math programs. There, I cut it out once, okay. So I just wanted to say thank you for everything you do out there. Patriot is really an amazing high school, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, may I add one more comment?
Sure.
I appreciate several of you acknowledging and referencing that Patriot is an alternative education campus, similar to GOL. But this is the last year that that's going to be true, because we are working hard to grow the mission of Patriot High School as, as the place where learning gets applied to careers, where learning gets applied to projects and to, to the kinds of technical, skilled trades that we need. And so everything that you said about integrated math that's right at an AEC is also going to be right for Patriot as we are evolving it. And so integrated is right for an integrated setting, and Patriot absolutely is an integrated setting, so I'm strongly encouraging you to move this forward for action and to approve it when we come back on the 24th.
And I think I see a zone leader creeping up to the podium.
Can I just say a couple of things real quick? And I appreciate all of your comments about Patriot. We definitely have a different student population that we need to address and need to meet those, those different learners. But I do want to point out that integrated math is not a lower-level math. This is a full-blown, students who are interested in college can go through an entire integrated math curriculum and will still be college-ready and should still score well on Accuplacer tests. The biggest benefit to Patriot is that we get to address many of those skills that they haven't learned over a course of a year, and then, like Jamie Lynn said, that we get to repeat that the next year. So it just builds in, starts out a little bit easier, and then the second year builds on the skills they already know to improve those skills, and then the third year as well. So after three years of integrated math, our students should be at the same level of a student who has gone through an entire AGA curriculum. So yeah, I'm really passionate about it.
Yeah, and I think there was a reference too on SAT scores, and so that ties in with the integrated math and the building blocks.
Yes, absolutely, because we have students that, like Mr. Bailey said, don't see geometry, and then they're sitting down to take the SAT or the PSATs, and there are a lot of geometry questions, so, thank you.
And I won't take very long, I was just creeping up, because this is one more step that Mr. Bailey and his team are taking to increase the rigor of offerings over at Patriot, and I am going to brag and just publicly say, Patriot High School, I was told this morning, has the highest growth in reading in the entire district, 12%. So they're, they're really working hard to increase rigor out of Patriot.
Well, that's fantastic. Okay, can we take a vote? Oh, no, this is moving forward, I'm sorry. If there's no objection, we'll move it forward. Thank you. You wanna take over now? Here? Here we go.
Is that the right one?
Nine point two, we have the pay schedule review.
Okay. Okay, good evening, Board. Peter Hilt, Superintendent, and I wanted to, I wanted to set up this discussion, because this one is getting great energy, and I wanna, I wanna thank some people, and I want to frame some things, and I'll probably return or speak from, from my seat a little bit later on. But I want you to know what we asked both the Vow Collaboration Team, that's the Large Representative Assembly, and the Teacher Pay Schedule Working Group. I want you to know what we asked them to do. The first thing is here in the title of this item, which is "Within the Budget." So it isn't even a priority. Making sure that we can afford what we propose is a non-negotiable. We're not allowed to deficit spend, we're not like state and federal governments, we have to balance our budget. And so we didn't even set that it was sustainable as a priority, it was sort of a given in a geometry problem. But then we did set three priorities. And those three priorities were, number one, to simplify and clarify and make transparent our teacher pay schedule. You all know that I have, I have great affection and love for my friend Brett Ridgeway, he was the, the Michelangelo, the Picasso of pay systems, and I'm not, I'm paint by numbers. And interestingly, state law has moved my direction, because there is a state law called the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act that requires us to have transparent, predictable, clear pay schedules, and that those pay schedules have to be represented on every job posting. So that was our number-one priority. We had to emerge from an era that was fairly opaque into an era that is completely transparent. And I am really proud of the work of these people, and I'm gonna name them for you, I'm gonna tell you, everybody that was on the, the Pay Schedule Task Force. The second priority, and this one is a priority, it didn't have to be, and you may override us, you may override me and say, "Mr. Hilt, you got the number wrong." But I said to that team, I said, "We have got to get the first number of our base to five, it's gotta be at least $50,000." The reason I did that is because we already have competing districts that are at $50,000. Widefield, for example, has already announced that they will be at $53,000 for next year. I anticipate that our neighbors to the west in District 20 will be above 50, probably District 2 will be as well, and certainly District 8 will be well above that. And so rather than accepting another year where we, we have multiple positions where students had a substitute teacher or a series of substitute teachers all year long, I gave them that directive. If that directive is wrong, it's my fault, because I'm the one that, that looked around the corner and said, "This is what we have to do to meet the expectation of being competitive." I set that as a, as an expectation, and I asked them to solve for that. The third thing, and it's, it's sort of more general, but I said, "Let's get the maximum amount of money to the maximum number of people." So let's raise it as much as we can across the board, and that's because we have had a consistent message from our workforce that competitive compensation is our lowest area of performance. And so as a board, you need to know, they didn't walk into this and say, "What's, you know, kind of the blue sky," they walked into this with four very clear expectations. It has to be budget-neutral, or it has to be budget-sustainable, that was the given, no negotiation on that. I asked them to move from complex and opaque to simple, clear, and transparent. I asked them to make sure that the base of the new schedule was at least $50,000, and I asked them to maximize the amount of raise for different members of the, the teacher workforce. And we're gonna talk about some of those specifics, but I wanna, I wanna point out a couple of things, and then I'm gonna give you the list of the people that were involved. Some of the great communication that you've been receiving, some of the activism from some of the people that I'm about to list, is possible because of the clarity and transparency of this new model. In the past, our pay system was a bit of a black box, and so we have, we have opened the box, if you will, and made it perfectly transparent, and that allows people to look very specifically at where they're at now, where they could be, where they feel like they should be compared to where someone else is. And so the old system was kind of inscrutable, and the new system is available for a high degree of scrutiny. So although I may, I may not feel good about the criticism, or I don't like hurting people, I wish everyone liked everything, I appreciate that we created conditions where our workforce could apply strict scrutiny and really examine it, and that, I'm proud of that, and I won't apologize for that. And I think you're gonna hear from us that we have worked really hard to think through all of the possible permutations and trade-offs in this system. So in addition to the Vow Collaboration Team, when that group meets, it's like 50 or 60 in this room, but we pulled out a subset of the VCT that worked with some of our HR professionals and our finance professionals and a consultant, and I just, I wanna thank these people. Not only Dr. Troughtonberg, who will be presenting tonight, but Doug Milburn from our HR department, Dustin Horace was there as a representative of the Zone Superintendents, and he may speak to that 50,000 base and the impact of that on hiring. Justin Mendel was there, fantastic representative, has taken the lead in developing a survey to gather good data. I've already got access to that, I think some of you already do as well, but I'm, I'm happy to share that or ask him to share that, because you need to hear the, the pain and the, the passion that is in some of the, the comments and how teachers are experiencing this proposal. Laura Anderson was a great member. All of these teachers were vocal and, and assertive, they went back and talked to their colleagues and brought perspectives forward. Margaret Jerk, Dr. Jerk might be the longest-standing member of our Teacher Compensation Task Force and what eventually became the VCT, and is just, she's wise, she's insightful, has been a great partner. Mary Velasquez was there, because this is something that requires technical leadership, and she provides a lot of that. We had Mary Lou Edmund, we had Megan Rasmussen, Melissa Mayfield that you heard from tonight, you could've heard from 20 teachers or 100, and please do not mistake the fact that two teachers spoke tonight. Please don't think that that's, that's all that we're concerned. There's a lot more concern than that. And so it would be just dishonorable of me to be dismissive or be like, "Oh, only two people come in." No, there's real, real angst about this. Now, I think we have some good responses, and I'm gonna ask the Board to indulge us in a little bit more time, so we can be patient and respectful of, of some of those concerns. Monica Glickman was there, Paul Anderson, Rebecca Whitaker, Ron Sprems, our friend from finance was part of this, and of course Spencer McCabe that you've, you've heard from before. And so before I, I just step away and, and our odd couple takes over, our own Hans and Franz, I just wanna tell you, I, I am grieved at how this feels to our colleagues, and yet I think as we've come out of an era, we're doing the next right thing. We're not doing the last right thing, and we'll explain that as we go. I think this is year one of probably a three- or four-year process, and we'll explain that some more, but I wanna tell you, these are really good people. Nobody sandbaked this process. The trade-offs that we've had to face are trade-offs that they, they talked to us about and they talked to their colleagues about. So what you have is the product of, of an attempt, imperfect as it was, to be super transparent, to be super thoughtful, and to serve the district and set us up for a decade of, of great compensation. And so you'll hear more about that, and I'll speak more to that later, but I just, I wanted to take personal responsibility and let you know how proud I am and how grateful I am of the people that I just named for you. So let me turn this over to Paul Anderson, our Executive Director of People and Culture, and Dr. David Troughtonberg, our Chief Financial Officer, Executive Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Board. I'm Paul Anderson, the Executive Director for People and Culture. We are going to walk through the presentation. We think it's really important to get through the things that we intend to, to present tonight, knowing that we'll, we'll spend some time on, more time on some things than others, but I'm gonna let Dr. Troughtonberg lead us off.
Thank you. Yes, I'm in a tie. Yes, I have conformed. Before we begin, I really would like to shine the spotlight on Spencer McCabe. He really is a spreadsheet master. I mean, I, I watched him. I'm okay spreadsheeting, and now that I know his skill set, I'm never doing another Excel spreadsheet again, I truly am not, okay? He's, he's the ninja, took care of those two ninjas that aren't here, so I feel, I feel like we're protected. So this was a long process, it's taken about four months, it was done with, you know, a desire to collaborate, a desire to get informed, a desire to be transparent, and from the perch that Paul and I sit in, from a desire to make sure that our district was economically, professionally competitive, to provide, you know, the best place for our employees to work and feel valued on all levels, no matter what the year, no matter whether you were a teacher or a non-teacher. So let's go to the next slide, please, or is that me? Do I control this? Great. You know, managing in complexity isn't easy, and this stems from what's known as a complex adaptive system, not gonna bore you with the history of it, but just know that it is chaotic, and chaos happens, then it kind of reforms, it's never the same, and part of what is happening is we are getting influenced by the market. And the market has said to us that for us to be competitive in the recruiting and retaining end of our, of mostly newer teachers, we probably do need to be, we first tried to solve at 53, broke the bank, 52, broke the bank, 51, we were getting closer, but to be prudent, because we know how we have to fund this, we figured, okay, Superintendent said 50, we're gonna see and play around at that number. So on the next slide, what did we solve for? Okay, now, in a complex system, there's so many things happening, it's not linear, it's not complicated, it's not like building a Boeing 747, it's like really trying to understand mayonnaise, right? That's kind of a good metaphor for complexity. It's just, it's hard to pull it apart, right? So we started with a few binding constraints, these are the inputs that Spencer was given to really start modeling. We know that the rate of inflation was 5.2%, we wanted to make sure that any base increase was greater than that. We knew that we wanted to get to at least $50,000, and this is, the, the third part, point is really important. We told everybody that no teacher would move to a, the new salary schedule and be worse off than they are on the existing schedule. We also were very clear that we would look, and we did a lot of examination of could we turn years of experience directly to steps, or did we have to go and place based on a dollar figure? We could not get to the step conversion, because it was so expensive, we just don't have the money, and this is already a stretch, because as you know, in order for us to fund this, we need a parallel change in the, the way that our mill levy override money is allocated from 7624 to 7030. Going below that is not anymore a risk-adjusted bet, it's, you know, it's borderline, we, we get really worried to do that. We did create a much more linear model, it's very understandable. No deceleration, right? So there's no deceleration, the old model kind of started pumping the brakes, and you would, you would get increases, but they were smaller. We, 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 we kind of took that constraint out, and then once we did look in benchmark, bench, benchmarking our model with our outside consultants' work, we realized we had some compression we needed to deal with, some clustering, so then we kind of focused on that. So that, that was our approach, and we worked hard to try to get it right. So the next slide, so I, this, this is one of the equations in the model, just, I, I really want our community to see this. This isn't an easy thing that we kind of went after, this is like a really, like, difficult tiger to tame, so this is a representation of just one of the lines in the model, so to speak, so you could see just how complex it is and how interrelated the variables can be. So, okay, is this me or you?
This is me.
Thank God, okay.
So we'll talk about the results, and these, that is yours, the pay schedules that are attached in, in the packet, so this is just a summary of some of the things. So starting first with the teacher's schedule, we, as presented, we, we did get above 50,000, just barely, and the, we were able to keep all, all raises on here above that, that 5.2. In fact, the lowest increase is six, six and a half percent, and then with an average across all, all teachers of 9.3%. This is really tremendous increase this year, we know, well, we don't know what is happening other places, but we, we're pretty sure for teachers, it's gonna be less than this. So we think we're, we're making a pretty good move in, in the competitive market with this. You know, some of the, some of the other changes that we made to the, in this model and the schedule, we're talking about the, the elimination of the deceleration, and we've also did a lot more equalizing across, across the schedule, so both down, down and across the schedule, which creates a lot more predictability, and then in the end, consistency in pay increases. So while there's a significant variation, a more significant variation in the raises this year, so six and a half to, I can't remember what the top one is, 12 or 13%. We think future years, it's, it's gonna be much more similar, because the, the steps and lanes, percentage changes are consistent, so that is one of the things that our teachers really asked for as we started this work, you might recall conversations a year ago. So really happy to see that we achieved that. It maintains kind of that honoring education or valuing education attainment, and so the, while we've eliminated two of, of the, the lanes, the education lanes in this, the model for going forward, we selected the two lanes that had the fewest incumbents, so the 36, BA 36, MA 36 have, will, will no longer use. We won't place people on them going forward, if people are on those, they can move off and, onto, onto 48. But that, the, the, the elimination of those two lanes enables us to have bigger increases across the lanes. So we, we're in the local market, D49 with 12 current lanes is the most, the highest number of lanes, and, and when you look at percentages across the schedule right now, they're pretty small. So that, those couple of changes enable us to increase the move, the size of the movement as people advance their education. We'll take a look at the other schedules. So there are a couple of things I'd highlight about, about the ESP schedule. First, that we're getting, this change, these changes will get the base of that schedule to just shy of $17 an hour. I think that's, that's a good place for us to be, we'd like to be higher, but I think that, but, but it is a pretty good, pretty good place competitively, I think. And then the other, I'll call, I'll, I'll note that one of our specific positions, it's been a challenge to fill for years, Special Education Pairs, we get to a starting, starting rate there of We get to a starting, starting rate there of close to $21 an hour. So really good movement we've made on that really important role that's been so hard to fill. So, I, I think that's really, some really positive moves overall in our starting ranges, our starting rates for each of the 30 ranges on the ESP schedule, and with an average increase there of 7%. Likewise, professional, technical, and special service providers, that'll be 7% average. And then, for administrators, 6%. So it does, it does accomplish what we wanted to in the sense of that, you know, sort of being above inflationary, or being above inflation. There are a few exceptions. Individual staff members who are, because of their placement on the schedule currently, they just, they won't be at 5.2%. So we're going to work on a, a one-time adjust, or an adjustment for this year that gets them to the 5.2%. So we will be able to say that every employee is receiving at least 5.2%.
Ron said that's paralegal.
Okay. And, and that should be paralegal wages also, just to note. A, a quick note about the look ahead for next year. We have work to do on the other schedules. This double-step feature, or split-step feature exists on other schedules. And that same kind of challenge with clarity and predictability simplicity exists, and we, we intend to tackle that next year. I think we've learned some, we're certainly learning some things this year that will apply as we get, we begin that work earnest.
So I'm gonna take over this slide. This is just from the spreadsheet calculating the cost of the teacher pay schedule. I'm Spencer McCabe, the Budget Manager. Sorry about that. So they've already laid out the variables, and these are the results. The minimum increase is 6.5%. That's really just the current $47,000 base going to that 50,000. The average increase is 9.3, and that's just a total average of every increase that's people are getting. And then the maximum's 12.7. And so, that cost comes out to 5.8. And the budget we've allocated for teacher increases is 5.5. It's a little over budget, but in the grand scheme of things, it's really not that much. You know, a few unfilled positions can essentially cover that cost. I do wanna explain the 5.5 a little bit, if in case it looks a little wacky. Our new money, from the last time I presented, we adjusted it a little bit, because now we're projecting a 5.8% increase to PPR, and a flat increase to student count. And so that leaves us with about $6.6 million in new money. With the change to the MLO, to the 70, 30, that gives us about 1.3 million. And then we took out 2.4 for non-teacher staff increases, which leaves 5.5. Just to explain what that number is coming from. That's pretty much all I have on this slide.
And Spencer, you can correct me, Board, but that, that shift from the current base to the new proposed base is a 6.5% rise on the base. The reason that the overall average raise is 9.3 is both because we, we made sure that in the translation, nobody moved down. Everybody moved either level or up. So that's one reason. And because the vast majority of our teachers aren't earning the base. And so, the shape of the schedule drags that average higher. But on the base, the base actually is the minimum raise. No teacher would get less than a 6.5% raise, starting at the base. And the, on the proposed schedule, the highest raise would be 12.95%?
12.66.
12.66, okay. So please remember those two numbers, 6.5 and 12.66. So, so it's basically a range of 6%. And that's gonna be significant later on when we talk about the alternatives.
Yeah. And one of the ultimate goals of the structure of the new schedule is to not have that range. Everyone, in the future, everyone will be getting the same percent. Whereas like, in a translation from a complex model to this one, that range is just inevitable.
My rabbit's foot, just stay right there. Okay, good. Great job. Thank you. So, I, I think this slide is important, because this is the challenge, not just for D49, but for all school districts. We have to figure out, in cohort years, 0 to 5, that is where we bring the most in, that's the most hiring input into our system. And it's the generations of, you know, probably XYZ, and then Alpha will probably be coming on stream. But why is this happening? We know it's not just pay-related. There are some generational elements that are flowing and floating, and kind of like little electrons going back and forth in that 0 to 5 years. One is, we know this, these are generations that like variety. They'll try something for one, two, three years, then they'll try on for the next. We also know it's a generational cohort group that wants to be paid now. They don't wanna wait for their 30-year retirement for para, mostly because they like to do different things and try different things. So, as an organization, we're gonna solve for the pay. And then the district, all of these other professionals are gonna have to solve for, how do we engage them? How do we honor them? Just like we're doing for all of our teachers throughout the system. But, you know, what gets a better conversion rate than losing 70%? Be good if we could, you know, if we're successful in doing what we do in recruitment and retention, and, and how we kind of help them save for retirement, to get that number reduced more and more. The more we reduce that, the less turnover is, the less costly it is for the district, the more that we can kind of, you know, stay competitive in salaries. Then there's also the challenge of the profession. Whether that's classroom management, you know, guardian management, it's very stressful. And maybe we also need to do a better job, or think differently on how we do professional development, how we onboard, how we support in this newer cohort. It's not my area of expertise, but we recognize that it's a challenge. I think we have great people in Lisa Filo's area and elsewhere to manage this and meet it. And, and we're, we're gonna tinker towards utopia for this one. As, as we've noted, as we go down the system, and we get to the more veteran teachers, they're still over 30 steps, right? In the new schedule? It stops, it's 30. So, we, we still are keeping a significant number of step increases, but we can't afford it into infinity. It just, it just breaks the bank. So, you know, I, I really do think this is an important model, because we do know that when we implement this new pay schedule, that we're gonna have what I call data anomalies, market anomalies. There are gonna be these one-off outliers. It can happen anywhere in the system, because we don't know what's really gonna happen till we do this. But we are prepared to meet those anomalies. And let me give you an example. Let's say you're a teacher, you're here, you finished your first career, you're on your second career, you got a master's, and you came into the district with zero years of experience, and you're now on step two, right? We hire somebody else, or, or you're at, you know, that's where you are. And we hire somebody else, or you're at step one. We hire somebody else, same master's, same everything, and they come in at step three or four. We have an obligation, both, you know, legally, as well as economically, culturally, to what I call equalize that. Now, how we equalize it, there's a number of different ways, and we're, we're ready to do that. I think we're required to do it by law. So, we, we already factored that in. It's hard to explain to, you know, teachers when, or any employee, when they get, you know, emotionally connected. We're all gonna argue our own personal kind of economic desires. But in our role, we have to solve for the organizational level. And be fair, be transparent, and try to do as best economically as we can. I, I used to say when we started this, well, if we can get to the level of the least amount of unhappiness-happiness, we've done our job. And I actually think we're there, right? So, you know, I have a lot of confidence in this model, and, and in, and would have produced with the salary schedule. So can we do the next slide? Yeah, is that you?
And David, David, I wanna interrupt you before, and just, I wanna set this slide up, please, Board.
Thank, thank you.
The state of Colorado is handing us 5.8%. So think of $5.80. And we're turning around and handing out to the largest segment of our workforce, $9.30. Now, I'm not the math level of those guys, but I don't know how you can do that without breaking the bank. And so this slide is the explanation of how this is not irresponsible. It's, it's really a one-year opportunity and a one-year window. But it's not irresponsible. You need to know that. This does not violate the, the initial given that we have to stay within the budget. Peter, how is that possible? David, how's that possible?
Thank you. Well...
Yeah? Spencer, how's that possible?
So one of the biggest factors is tweaking that MLO ratio from 76 to 70. And this was not possible in the past until this year, because there was a 26% jump in property value and property taxes, which means we get more money. It's, it's rough for the homeowner, but we benefit from it. And so, part of that 76% is that it goes to our COP payments, and we're required to pay those. Well, now that we have this 26% jump in property taxes, we have a lot of savings, essentially. We have more money than, we're saving more money than we need to. So, we decided to tweak that, to shift that money into teacher pay. And that essentially explains how we're able to afford it.
And I'm gonna chime in again, because you've heard me say, I, I, on financial matters, it's helpful for me to simplify. And one of the cardinal rules of, of public finance is, you don't pay for recurring expenses with non-recurring revenue. Obviously, salary is a recurring expense, and so it would not be appropriate for us to spend, you know, SFR funds, or something that's one-time. But by tweaking this formula on the MLO, COP, you know, by tweaking what we allocate for COPs, we're creating a recurring revenue resource, and we're applying all of it, and a little bit more, actually, to creating this new salary schedule. And then, we're using that little bit of extra fund balance to pay for the transition. Remember I said, everybody goes up or across? And so when you have 900 teachers, 890, moving that many people up and across costs. And in this case, it costs us 575. So, I, I wanna continue to reassure the Board, this is a responsible financial plan. We're not breaking the bank.
I also wanna point out that there, we also had to adjust our model. We were at a 1% increase, but as the superintendent said, we also heard in our Pike's Peak kind of business officers meeting, every district around us was kind of projecting down 1%, maybe even more. This caused a little consternation at our end, and I was like, you know, in order to be prudent, till we see what's gonna happen in October, let's take it to zero. If it does go down by 1%, we can handle it. If it goes up by 1%, we can come back and revisit, should the base go to 51? How do we start looking, you know, at a translation for the cost of, you know, kind of moving teachers? Because it's gonna take HR a certain amount of time to reassess where every teacher is, both in terms of years of service and degree, to verify before we will make that move. So, you know, that's a risk. It's, we can take it, but we're not going to know that number till October. Just like we are not going to know the composition of the teaching staff that we hire, in terms of, you know, that composition, till probably sometime right before school starts. So, you, you know, I don't wanna wait, because we have a really good model that solves for 99% of what we were asked to do. And we have the ability to, what I call tweak, or deal with these one-off outlier events. And if they're more than one-off, we're gonna deal with it in a different way. We may have to come back to you and say, mm, gonna have to look at tweaking the MLO ratio, even though we don't want to, right? But we have some bandwidth, if we need it, in the case of like, you know, kind of a draconian outcome that we didn't expect. You should also know that we did do a lot of sensitivity testing on what does a $1,000 increase to the teacher-based salary cost the district? And that's 1.5 million. That's why we couldn't get to 53, because we just don't have another 4.5, 5 million, because then we're moving into the reckless range, and we don't wanna be reckless. We wanna be good, risk-adjusted, balanced decision-makers. So, that's what this slide shows. And then, I don't know, what's the next slide? Oh, thank God. Okay.
You, you're answering all the questions. First question.
Let, let me ask the first question, please, and then I'll try and answer it, and the smart guys will shake their heads violently when I'm wrong, if I'm wrong. But I'm, I'm not gonna be wrong on this, because we've worked really hard. The first question ought to be, what about what your teachers spoke about earlier, this phenomenon? Now, I, we gave a name to this phenomenon, and some are unhappy that we gave the name, because it, it made it so clear what was happening. But we call this phenomenon leapfrogging. Leapfrogging is what happens when two teachers of equivalent experience are hired at different times. One might have been hired five years ago, and one is hired this year. And because of changes in the salary schedule, including a really big change we're recommending tonight, the teacher coming in gets the benefit of the change, and the teacher who has been here doesn't. Now historically, we have solved for this by artificially suppressing the pay of newly hired employees. That was that big nested formula. This is the nested formula that allowed us to do that. And so historically, we have capped new hires. This is, this has created two problems. One is, it's really hard to make a clean offer, because you make an offer, but then you have to go back and check to see that it doesn't leapfrog anybody. And so we, we have had many opportunities to, I'm sorry, many times when we've had to go back and reduce our offer, which is a really bad way to hire people. But we've had to do that, because that was something that we were trying to solve for. There is another factor, and it's incredibly important to the reason we're recommending the particular order of operations that we're recommending. And that is that there are a lot of people on our schedule, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the schedule here. There are people on our schedule that, let's say that they, they might be here, now, let's, more realistically, we might have somebody here in, in step 14. If we hired them eight years ago, they only got 10 years of service credit. And then we moved it to 12, and then we moved it to 15, then to 18, then to 20. Because as the market increased the cap for service years, we also increased the cap some, one year we led that increase. But what that means is, if a person came here in 2010, or 12, or 14, and they were significantly veteran, it's likely that they didn't get all the credit for their actual years of experience. Does, does that make sense? Now, I need to explain why this matters to our decision this year. Because we have 890 individual instances that we're trying to understand and manage for. And we have over 25 years of pay scale variability that has created mostly conditions where people are, their steps are, do not represent, and are lower than. But there's a few instances, not a lot, I won't pretend that it's like a big number, but there are a few instances where people are actually over their actual years. And that's because we had a model called SKIPPY steps, where we granted double steps at the six-year intervals. And so there's, there's just some anomalies... And so there's, there's just some anomalies scattered throughout the system. So here's the really difficult trade-off. If you direct us to go back and prevent any possible leapfrogging, if you tell me, Peter, you got this wrong, your priorities were not right. Your first priority should have been transparency and then it should have been cut off the legs of the leapfroggers and don't let any leapfrogging happen. If we do that, if the way we do that is by translating everyone to their steps equals years, here are a couple of things that have to happen in order for that to take place. You have to accept that some teachers will get no raise at all and some teachers will get a 25% raise, but the average raise will go below 7%. And the base will stay under $48,000, which means in a year when inflation is going up 5.2, our teacher base will go up a little over 3%. And so that Val Collaboration Team and that Teacher Salary Group studied this. We had a really sharp consultant that kind of walked us through this. And, um, this, we did, we did not come to this easily, but it was our conviction and I remain convinced, our conviction is that we have to get the schedule right in a way that gives a significant generous pay raise to our entire workforce and then sets us up. And I would welcome you to direct us to prioritize changing, we'll call it repositioning. I would welcome that. I believe if you tasked us with repositioning all teachers over the next two cycles, I believe we could do that. We'd like to model that. But we tried to model that and, and here was what we ran into. We, we sent out a, a request to our workforce, our teacher workforce. And we said, please tell us exactly how many years you have. We had just under 50% respond to that. We extrapolated from that, just under 50% to what it would cost us. And that's why I'm able to say to you that if we were to correct 20 years and, and multiple layers, if we are to correct for that, the price we have to pay institutionally is instead of having a 6% variability, we have to accept a 25% of variability. Instead of having a base that goes up 6.5%, we have to accept a base that goes up at less than the rate of inflation. And instead of having an average raise of 9.3, we have to hold the average raise under 7%. And when you frame it that way, then that creates a, a decision and it's your decision to make. We can solve for any one of these variables. We understood that our priority was transparency. We can do that even if you tell us to eliminate all leapfrogging in, in this year zero. Or you can say, get the base higher, raise the whole schedule and, no, I'm not going to give you two years, I'll give you one year. Next year, you, you prioritize repositioning everybody. We'll salute smartly and we'll start to work the problem. I think a historical analogy is very helpful. When we had to freeze teachers for three years in the early aughts, we had to freeze our workforce for three years. And if somebody got frozen for one year, we defrosted them in one year. We moved them twice. If they were frozen for two years, we defrosted them in two, three, and three. And I'm suggesting, we have some people that would translate four or five years behind, but it's a pretty small number. Most of the translation, uh, and I think Justin and, and his work in gathering some additional information from teachers on this, but based on our survey, um, our, our information request and their survey, we know that most of the discrepancy is going to be in the two to four range with a significant bubble at one and a little bit at five. I, I believe we can mathematically and financially manage that over the next two pay cycles. But if we go the other direction and we first solve for the steps, we lower the baseline of this salary schedule for every year into the future. And so I don't have quite enough information to calculate the difference for an individual or for all individuals, but I believe that the ratcheting effect of getting the whole schedule 9.3% higher, that ratchet, that jump of 9.3% pays dividends all, in all the out-years. But when you make that big of a jump, you create the leapfrogging problem. And so that's the, the realist, I can explain it to you. You understand what our recommendation is? It's a recommendation, it's a recommendation that feels like we're not valuing teachers, but I'm going to make a final point. The phenomenon of leapfrogging is more of a hypothetical. It is if someone comes in to my position with the same years, they'll get paid more. It could happen and that is 100% true. Everyone that is saying that is speaking the truth, but it's hypothetical. The 9.3% is cash in the bank. And so we prioritized the real versus the hypothetical, understanding that you may override the priorities we've set and direct us differently. So I just wanted to, to spend a little time to try to explain our thought process. And if it's the wrong thought process, you've heard from plenty of smart people, including lots of our, uh, teacher workforce, we've heard from them as well. None of them are wrong. I don't, I don't disparage any of their perspectives. They have a, um, they have a reasonable concern about what this move communicates. And the idea of repositioning over the next two years is responsive to that. Meanwhile, as Dr. Trautemberg said, if that hypothetical becomes a reality, just as we have historically, we would be legally obligated under the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act to correct that discrepancy. In the past, the way we corrected that discrepancy was by suppressing the new hire. What I am suggesting is that we would correct that discrepancy by raising the existing employee. And that's a profound change, but we think it's more consistent with the new, the new legislation. And when Dr. Trautemberg said, we, we are banking some, we're, we're equipped to do that. We've reserved some monies to do that. That's what he's talking about. It won't be 800 teachers or 500 teachers. It won't probably be 100 teachers. But where it happens, we would make that move this year and then we would reposition, I'm recommending over the next two cycles. You may say, no, do it in year zero, do it in year one, do it in year three. Does that, does that explain the phenomenon?
Yeah, and I, um, I emailed, so the rest of the board didn't see my email because we don't communicate about these things ahead of time because you're at risk of violating Open Meeting Act. But, um, I gave several scenarios similar to what Mr. Hiltz is talking about. Um, I sent to Mr. Hiltz, Mr. Trautemberg, and, um, Mr. Anderson. And so, um, I don't know if the president's willing to indulge me to kind of give that, those examples so all of you kind of have that information too. So there's actually kind of two anecdotal pieces to it that go with it. The first is that I taught here for three years, 18 years ago. And I believe D-49 gave seven or eight steps at the time of experience. When I hired in to the science department at Falcon High, every single teacher who worked in that science department had a mortgage for a home in D-49, including my colleague who was only in his third year of teaching. Someone now coming in can't even afford to rent an apartment on what the beginning teacher's salary is. So the economic reality that we're asking new teachers to face is very, very different than the one that those of us who began careers in education or were continuing them 20 years ago is, which is part of why keeping that base at a minimum of $50,000, which once you actually have a family of two, by the way, qualifies you for affordable housing in Colorado Springs. And I believe there's only a couple of apartment complexes in all of D-49 and those are still 1,200 bucks a month for a two-bedroom and, um, have really, really long waiting lists. So, um, being a parent of someone who have had to help with some of those things, I, I've become way more aware of those things than I, I realized. Um, and you'll notice, by the way, I believe D-2 is building 395 square foot places to rent people for 900 a month. All of that is just unbelievable to me when I know colleagues were affording starter homes 20 years ago on what we could pay our teachers in our own district, which is why we have so many teachers who are also parents in our district and taxpayers in our district because we could pay them to live here, kind of the Ford model way back in the day. So that's a piece of why that part's important. The other piece is that I actually lived through a translation like this myself in, when I worked in Boston. My district was, I, I wasn't in a school district, I was in a private school, a Catholic school at the time, but we were very, very below market. Okay, I hired in at 19,000. When I left, eight years later, I was making 42. That's because of a concerted effort similar to this, um, where they looked and said, you know, we cannot compete in the market to keep people or to hire people. So we, um, some of the veteran teachers worked with admin to come up with a plan to, and did a market study and then said, okay, well, here's a pay scale that would be market. But we can't afford to take everybody to market and, in this year, and we can't, but we have to hire new people at market because there's no way we can fill these empty seats, the empty teacher spots without that market pay. But what we did do is what Peter has now mentioned of, okay, they took all of our, our numbers and said, okay, those of you who are closest to market, we'll get you to market the first year. Those of you who are kind of in the middle, we're going to take two years, but we will get you to market and you will be equal. That, that new hire that first year made more money than you did, even though they had the same experience, but I'm making you whole by the second. And the folks who were the furthest off, and one of my colleagues was $25,000 off, and she was actually part of the teacher team that negotiated it and agreed to it, took them three years to get her there. And we all understood that in the long run, that worked better for all of us. We can't not hire at market because we won't get anybody and we just, you know, heard, we had Falcon High teachers honored today for covering a math class for a good portion of a year, um, because we have no math teacher for seventh grade math. There are kids currently learning math by attending class with another teacher on Zoom at that school. These are the realities of what our children are experiencing. I have kids in schools who are experiencing this themselves with teacher shortages. So, um, which burns everybody out too, right? So we have to solve that problem, but we also have to recognize this piece. And so I think we have to do some kind of combination. And so talking about saying, what is, where, how do we make people whole in the long run? Right? And how many years would it take us to do that? That's a very different equation to solve than saying, come up with another one and a half million dollars minimum, which I believe is what you guys said it would take to do step to step, um, in one year. But in two to three years, we should be able to do that. And I think there's different ways of trying to solve that equation and that would take time. So the, the question then becomes, do we look at committing to, this is our long-term solution because we know the salary schedule can be sustainable? But then also commit to working over this next year to determine what are those gaps? And what formulas will make it fair in the long run so that people get, um, so people end up where they would have been? In part because we're also looking at how it impacts retirement, right? So if we have people who've literally taught in this district for their entire careers, that, you know, extra three, the three steps that they see themselves not getting equal to all of their time in D-49, impact their top three years when they're close to retirement, it's going to impact what they make for the rest of their lives and what they have to live on, um, as a retired teacher. I think we have to honor that too. So we could be putting together another working group and directing to say, we have to now solve for this piece. And there's a variety of things you can look at. You can look at the discounting of other experience that in this current market and education shortage probably doesn't work. But we could also say, D-49 years are different than other years for people who are currently in our system. So someone who literally has served every single year of their teaching career here and has worked, you know, 26 years for D-49 and stuck with us through all of that, maybe we try to make them whole as quick as we can. Because we also know they're closer to retirement and that top three is going to determine their standard of living for the rest of their lives. They don't have time to make that up. And then we kind of look in the middle range and the less. I don't know all the answers to that piece, but I think we could move in that direction. And I know that, um, emotions have been really high. Most people have actually been incredibly respectful and understanding and I really, every single email I read, I, I didn't take as offensive in any way, some of the anonymous posts online. If you can't own what you have to say to anybody, then please don't bother posting. I can tell you personally, I campaigned for, um, the MLO that failed. So did Mike Heil. Probably cost me votes in the election because everybody I handed anything to about my campaign. I also handed something about, um, the MLO. So did Mr. Heil. So Lori Thompson voted to put it on the ballot in the first place. She couldn't campaign for it because she was sitting on the board and there's legal ramifications to that. So, um, there was a huge commitment by many people up here to try and make it better. And there were some people implying that somehow we were all somehow colluding on changing it. As you heard from, um, Peter tonight, the board wasn't in the room making these discussions. That wasn't our role. But I can tell you, having attended these meetings as a non-board member for a couple of years, that this process began at teacher request. Right? So, um, the board was asked, take us to something like this. And it was a commitment by the prior board to move in this direction based on the request of our existing staff to do it. So now the question is, how do we move forward continuing to honor it? That's where I am on it, but that's kind of some of the history too. Sorry I took a long time, but I hope it helps frame it.
Director Schmidt?
Well, that's a lot. I'm going to say that we have 409, according to those numbers, people that have six to 10 years. We have about 1%, I didn't quite get the number there, that have 21 to 28. And personally, I think those people have to be made whole right fast. Teachers are really feeling that they're getting a slap in the face with some of this stuff. And some of them are. It's our job though to listen to the district too. And some of what the district says makes a lot of sense. For me, it comes down to student outcomes. Are students going to have better academic outcomes if we focus on higher base pay for inexperienced new hires? Or do we achieve a better student outcome by focusing on retaining our existing experienced teachers? For me, I'm going to go with the experienced teachers all day long.
Yeah, so, um, when I first started exploring this issue, uh, one of the initial questions I asked of Mr. Hiltz was, uh, you know, how do, how common do we forecast this leapfrogging to be? And the, the initial forecast was, um, we see that maybe five to 15 new hires would end up, uh, leapfrogging. They would be primarily in the, you know, 10 years and more cohort. And it would be very rare in the, um, in the cohort that is less than 10 years. Since then, we've been hearing from teachers who've been able to look at their, their information and we're, we're getting real data now. And it does seem that that forecast is flawed. We just heard from one of our teachers tonight who said, hey, I'm in my fourth year and I'll be on step one. We heard from another one, you know, I'm in my fourth year, I'll be in step two. I heard from another teacher, I'm in my seventh year, I'll be on step four. So it does seem that the phenomenon will be significantly more, uh, common.
Let me, let me respond to that. For 15 years, every teacher has been placed on the schedule other than by their steps equals years. So the phenomenon of leapfrogging happens if, it, it's not at all accurate to say being placed in year 10 when you actually have 12 constitutes leapfrogging. That's not accurate. What is accurate is if a teacher comes in, and the reason I, I forecast that that will be very low is a, is a painful reality. If someone has 15 years of experience and they teach in the El Paso County region and they're not in D-49, it's highly likely that, that we pay less even on this new salary schedule. So the likelihood of somebody who is that veteran coming across for less So the likelihood of somebody who is that veteran coming across for less pay is very low. And that's what our hiring data that I shared with the board tells us. And so I just, I want to be really clear here. I didn't say that there wouldn't be people whose step translation was lower than their years of service. We weren't trying to solve for years of service. What I said was that the phenomenon of leapfrogging where someone comes in, in the same position and in the same lane and out earns an existing, I said that phenomenon would be pretty low. I still stand by that because the condition, we would have to be attracting somebody so fiercely that they're willing to take a pay cut. Almost nobody comes to D-49 and takes, and gets a pay raise. So we're still the bargain low, low, even with this new schedule, we're a lot more competitive, but we're still underpaid compared to our community.
Okay, and I think that's important to share and that's why I wanted to bring that up because, you know, it's so easy to look at your schedule and where you ended up and say, yeah, I'm going to get leapfrogged by practically every new hire. So I hope the staff is hearing that and digesting that. I do really, really, really understand the fifty K. That is a magic number, you know, there's a reason why you go out there and buy something and it's, you know, X ninety-nine, right? There's a psychology at work and if, you know, if one of our neighboring districts was instead offering fifty-two as the base and we're at forty-nine, that just seems like a huge difference versus fifty and fifty-three, even though it's the same difference. But it really does influence people's decision-making and it just, it takes us out of the conversation.
We just received some feedback, the way we can now work with live stream is amazing. So I'm not going to name the person who sent this, but this is someone who has emailed us with concerns and who was involved in the process, who just emailed as he's listening now and said, if Peter's plan is acceptable, two to three pay cycles to attempt to catch current teachers up while still honoring equal pay for equal work if the hypothetical leapfrogging happens, is something I could get on board with and I'm hopeful many others could be too. So that's already a shift as we're starting to have this conversation in real time of someone who I know is committed. Doesn't mean everyone feels that way, doesn't mean everybody's even quite there yet, but I think that that's, that is a message that maybe this is something that we as a board need to think about, kind of tasking them to start looking at.
Yeah, and I'd like to add too that I think we, we need to be continuing this dialogue because it is a complicated topic. And then afterwards, I would really like to see a survey from our teachers to, once they've had a chance to digest all this and see how they're really feeling.
Director DiVola?
I can understand a lot of the concerns, especially from the people who brought it up. And then a lot of the people who were concerned were not just veteran teachers, they were brand-new teachers or teachers in the first years of service concerned about their colleagues and themselves, actually, because what you had said, like they were step four and then they got translated to step one. I'm just curious, if we have the phenomenon of leapfrogging that's higher than we predicted, would our budget be able to actually handle the equalization of their pay?
Okay, so there's a few things I'd like to just remind everyone. First off, we have high probab, we have high confidence in the model that was used to do the salary schedule. What is not known, and it cannot be known until we do it, is what actually happens in the market when we move forward on this. I mean, we know that we initially, we immediately place ourselves in a more competitive position and I'm not the, I'm not in HR, I don't know what are the talent that they're interviewing, that they're making offers to, but I think the sooner that can be announced, the better it is for them to recruit. If you're asking my personal judgment on this, I'm, you know, as the CFO, I am betting that it's not going to be as great as the concern is, but we're not going to know it till we do it. If it's a hundred teachers that it happens, we will make some steps, we'll do some adjustments. You know, I'm not using anything about, you know, we'll just have to be a little bit more prudent, right? Maybe, you know, I don't approve everything, right? But we're, we'll keep it going and we will adjust. We are committed to that and we have the funds for that. If we have to come back here and say, look, we kind of blew this thing, student count's down 1%, you still want to do this or we have to legally do it? We can always adjust. I'm not advocating this because I would prefer not to have to do it and I don't, and we don't have to do it till we get better data, right? Till we see where actually is our student count. We can make the little adjustments we would need to make to ensure that we have that equity, right? That we are able to make those adjustments. If it's eight hundred people, well, then I'm wrong in my assessment and we're going to have to do something different, right? But I don't think that's the case. I also, look, I, I don't want to, I have to play the heavy here a little bit and, you know, it's not really the place I like to be by personality and temperament, but I have, I have my own kids who are teachers, right? But I have an obligation to serve the organization as a whole and make sure there's a bucket of money for all of those people that are supporting teachers and staff, central office, the grounds, facilities that make the school safe, heated, cooled, fed, everything. So if the community will work with us, we will be good, not just on our word, but this is a, you know, public forum, we will get to where everybody needs to be because we have a very good board, board's very supportive, we have a great superintendent and we have great teachers, right? I will say though, that if I could have drafted Justin Jefferson coming out of college as my receiver and not getting, you know, somebody that's about to, you know, that can't run as fast, I might pick Justin Jefferson, but that's me, but I'm not HR. So it's like, there's a combination of staff that makes the, you know, teamwork, you know, is, you know, the dream works with the teamwork. So we just have to keep hiring the best people we can, no matter where they fall. That's what we should be committed to and we will figure out how we can pay for it. But this is a great first step and it's the foundation for the future that we can build on. So that's why, you know, we were, look, we've taken risk here. I don't want you to think we haven't taken some risk, but it's what I like to call risk-adjusted. I know that when I was meeting with Deb, we, you know, we tried to talk about it in terms of, if you run your own individual business, you're making trade-offs all the day, every day. Some you don't like to make, but you're doing it for the greater good and the longevity of the business and that's where we think we are here. I want to remind everybody, no teacher is going to be lower in his or her pay. They still are getting the inflationary adjustments. We still have the ability, even when they get capped out, that we can still do longevity bonuses that recognize that loyalty. So it's still there, we just got to make it better as we move forward.
Ms. Thompson, may I, may I just ask the board to hear from Dustin? A year ago, you heard from Dustin about the market discrepancy in his own family, over ten thousand dollars. And so I'm just going to, I'm going to set him up. A lot, a significant number of the teacher leaders who have clarified this concern work under Dustin's leadership. He's been in the trenches with them, he's super receptive to them, and I would say maybe among all the voices in my ear, Dustin's might have been the most ironclad about getting the base to fifty. Because let me be really clear here, getting the base to fifty doesn't just help new teachers, it helps everybody on the scale on an average of nine point three percent, but it also does help us hire. And it's because we're making such a big move that we become more attracted to hire and that is what creates the phenomenon, the potential phenomenon or the realized phenomenon of leapfrogging. And so I just, I know Dustin has thought this through and he, he was the zone superintendent representative on the working group, and so let me just invite Dustin to share his perspective about this.
Sure, thanks Dustin Horace, Sand Creek Zone Superintendent. There are a lot of teachers here and most of them are from the Sand Creek Zone. And I think, anyone who knows me, I think would, or knows me well, would agree, I'm a pretty fierce advocate for teachers and have been for several years. I've, as Peter mentioned, I have pushed salaries for teachers when I was a principal, when Brett was here, to his probably anger at times about what we needed to do with salaries. And this, and I would absolutely not advocate for something that I did not think was good. This new salary schedule is unquestionably the biggest and best adjustment this district has ever made to a salary schedule for everyone. And I've been here a long time to say that. There's, there's no salary thing we've done that's this big of an impact. So today, I, I just took, I picked six random places on the salary schedule to say, okay, where would these people fall? And two of them are actual people and the other ones probably are, but I just picked. And they, all six of those, the lowest raise would be five thousand dollars and the other five were between sixty-five hundred and seven thousand dollars. That's pretty good. And so when I look at, they, it was mentioned, the percentage increases between six and a half and twelve point six, the average of nine point three, keep in mind, the six and a half is at the base, the lowest end. So that means most of our people are going to be above that. And fifty is important, it is important. I don't think it's enough. Peter will tell you, I've been advocating all year for fifty-two, but this is what we can do. And I get that. I go and recruit, I've hired a lot of people, and still this year, I went and recruited in Kansas and Nebraska and Wyoming. And when you go and recruit, there's tables and districts put up their beginning salary. And if you're, if you weren't at fifty, you, there's no one that's going to talk to you. So that, that is, that isn't even worth discussing in my opinion of the possibility of not being there. And then I look at, I was just sitting there and I was looking at value in all people and I know this can feel like in ways not valued, but it's hard to convince me that a nine percent increase is not valuing someone. The other thing I would say is, I would, I would highly encourage you when this comes up later to move this forward for a vote as soon as possible. Because we are benefited, the soonest, the sooner we can post our salary schedule, the more it helps us and our principals hire. Because that's what people look at and they, then they do look at the base, where's your base? That's the first thing everybody looks at. And it is hard to hire. And we're already getting at the end of, of the amount of people applying for jobs, honestly. There's just less than there were a month ago, a lot less. And so this salary schedule, the sooner we can show people what it's going to be, the better it's, the more it's going to help principals hire. But again, I just want to reiterate, I absolutely would not advocate for something that I didn't think was good for people and for teachers.
And Dustin, someone who's in private way in the early days, came and said, don't let any other administrator know, but please don't even give us a raise, make sure the teachers get it because they really need it and I can't. So he's willing to put his, his own personal financial situation and advocate for his teachers first. And that's been consistent his entire career because I was there way back in the day when he was saying that when we went through the freeze cycle. So it's, you know.
I had a couple of questions as well. How does the fifty thousand dollar start pay compare to some surrounding districts?
This is the time of the year when people get private. But we know that Widefield has announced at fifty-three. We know that D-11 was already at fifty. I'm pretty confident people in D-20 are watching this meeting because we're going pretty public and by policy, they are required to be in the top three in the region, Paul? Top three. So by policy, D-20 has to raise their base to be in the top three. I guarantee you Fountain Fort Carson will be in the mid-fifties, probably fifty-four. So if D-11 does even a, even a five percent raise, they'd be at fifty-two, fifty. That would require D-20 to get over fifty-three. So I've just given you four districts that we compete with pretty closely that are all going to be over fifty-two. And I suspect that Harrison will also be over, Harrison's already ahead of us, but what I like about this proposal is it gets us within a year of District eleven. We've never been that close. Dustin is right, this is significantly the biggest move we've ever made. That's why the leapfrogging conversation is even a problem because if we were making a little bitty move, wouldn't be no leapfrogging because there, there, there wouldn't be anyone to jump over because the salary move would be minuscule. Because we're making such a big move, we're still, we're still outmatched, but we are so much closer. And on the, can you, can you go to the schedule one slide forward, please? That one. The really cool thing about this is the steps left across and the steps down are bigger than the steps of our competitors. And so even somebody who's smack in the middle of this schedule compared to somebody in the middle of somebody else's schedule, they're going to outpace them. That's part of what going to ten lanes instead of twelve did for this schedule, is it made the horizontal moves better and it allowed us to be consistent all the way down. And so we are not going to lead the region, Ms. Thompson, we're not. We're not even going to be in the top probably five, but boy, would we be set up. And if you direct us to make, if you direct us to make steps equal years over the next cycle or two cycles, I would resist you even extending it to three. I'd say put the heat on us to do it in one or two. If you do that, that will have the effect of raising not our base, but raising our average and that would also help our competitive position.
Well, I know that the para, we have to raise, we have to make them whole because the para retirement rate is real as far as the averages go. My other questions are is, you know, I want to see us make the more experienced teachers whole and I also want it to be a sustainable model. And so that's where I'm curious is the sustainability of making the more experienced teachers
You could direct me to have Dr. Troutenberg and Spencer model that. What do you define as the more experienced teachers?
The ones who've been with the district longer, who have put in the blood, sweat and tears to be part of this district and to once again, when they look at, okay, this person's starting at a higher base, they might be getting a signing bonus, we might get some kind of a longevity bonus, but how can we feel like we are valued with the current model? That's really important.
So one, one alternative is you could direct us and say, anybody with twenty years or more, make them whole right now. From ten to twenty, make them whole next year and below ten, make them whole in the thirty. You could do that and we could model it for you. It is likely that that would require us to reduce the outlay this year, but I don't know that because it's a, it's a kind of an esoteric model. You direct us, we'll model it and we'll bring it back to you. But to Dustin's point, if we're not going to end up doing that, the sooner we can land, the better.
Jamie Lynn?
My personal take is that we need to make sure that we, we go backwards. So we start with the longest standing teachers who have been here the longest in the district with the most experience and we make them whole first. And we make sure that they're, they're being recognized for the value, the value that they are. And so I would say that we would, we would be directing you to, to go backwards. So for example, if we say twenty-plus years, let's make them whole. So, for example, if we say, twenty-plus years, let's make them whole now, fifteen to twenty next year, ten to fifteen, the year after, everybody else, we can do the, the leveling by, by absolutely year three, or something along those, those lines. Because you can't train brand-new teachers without your experienced ones. And, and your brand-new teachers, and just like we had said, you don't even know if those brand-new teachers are going to stay there. And more and more, we have, just like that chart showed, if you go back to the fi, zero to five turnover versus our, our people that have been here for so long, we're, we're basically saying, hey, you teachers that are zero to five, we're valuing you so much more than the other teachers, just because of raising the base pay versus figuring out how to solve the problem for our most veteran teachers. Now, I still see that fifty is our goal, and I'm with you on that. We want, we, because we want to be able to recruit, because the other thing is, is if we have just experienced pe, pe, teachers, and no new people coming in, you're going to burn out, because there's no workforce. So, it's important to have, to have both. But I would say, let's work backwards.
And I would welcome that invitation. We need to model it, because remember, the given that's not negotiable, it's not a priority, is we have, it has to be sustainable. And so, you need to know what that costs. Now, my sense is, or I wouldn't have even suggested it, my sense is that the shape of our workforce could make that viable. We could, we could model that cost for you. If we're being directed to do that in this year, we're going to decrease the base, we're going to decrease the average raise. And, and I'll be blunt, I would rather give someone, I would rather give more people a nine point three percent raise this year, because that benefits everyone who chooses to stay. And everyone that chooses to stay i, is, is worth our investment. If you direct us to go backwards, in your terminology, then that means somebody, or some people might jump four or five steps, some might jump one or two, and then others won't move at all until the second or the third cycle. And if that's the board's priority, we will absolutely salute smartly and, and model that. I would be very interested to know what the teachers think about that. Would they rather see a, move two years, two years, and two years until you're whole, or move, move half of the distance, and then the rest of the half in the second year? Or would they rather see it, because this is just the reality of the shape. If you put that to a teacher vote, there's a lot more voters in the younger bands. So you have to advocate for the most veteran teachers, if you do something that's more survey-based, as Mr. Hile suggested, the shape of our workforce. And not everybody's going to act just in their own personal self-interest, they'll, they'll care about their column, right? But they'll have a sense of, that would give you a good sense of whether working backwards or solving by distance from steps equals yours. Those are kind of two different approaches you could take.
So, I think doing something more of a combination, and this is more complex, but, so the real concern of the, the, the longest-serving teachers, some of whom literally their entire career has been D-49, is those who are within three years of retirement. Because anybody who's using para for their retirement knows this, right? That's also not a huge number. And so, I think instead of setting a year number, anybody who's twenty, anybody who's ten, let's first start by saying, and we have to model all of it first, so we know the cost, so that we don't promise something we cannot deliver on, right? So, I agree with Dustin that we need to be approving it sooner rather than later, with the understanding that we're working out, first of all, we know there has to be equal pay for equal work, so leapfrogging has to be addressed every single time anyway, so we don't have to actually have that concern, right? And then, secondly, I think the very first people who you try to make sure you can make whole first are the people who are within three years of retirement, because that average three years impacts the rest of their lives. Whereas, if you're at year fifteen, and it takes me four years to get you there, your, your three-year average that sets your retirement is going to be the same either way. The people who are at twenty-six years, who are retiring in two years, that's not true for them. So I, you know, I would advocate, instead of setting broad benchmarks, let's also look at that, and then figure out how many people it is, right? Like when we went through that thing with pre-K and saying, oh my God, we could have all of these kids who are in the situation, when we change the date, it could be too much money. We surveyed it, and we found out we had two kids, right? Oh, well, now we can guarantee those two kids could have their second year of pre-K, we can eat the couple of thousand bucks a kid that was, and make sure those kids got a second year. So same, same kind of logic here. So, my suggestion would be looking at saying, move forward with the schedule as presented, with the expectation they're going to come back with, what are all of the different ways we can make people whole, and then how do we do it sustainably, with a commitment from the board, that, that is our expectation.
Okay, I think next, Dr. Trautemberg, and then Deb.
Well, remember, there's, there's a, an event that could happen, that could be very beneficial, that could accelerate the process, which is, student count goes up one percent, we modeled that, that covers the nut, right? We also, because this is so complex, we were, we, we would need to just double-check with para, to make sure we put in our model, what is it, if we raise people, and we do this, you know, kind of equalization, does para have a cap? I, you know, my recollection is that may be the case, but we want to check and make sure, so.
David?
Yeah, I agree with that. There's also, like, health insurance, and dental insurance, and all that stuff, that all kind of goes along with that package, too. I did do the math, there are about one percent of people that have twenty-one to twenty-eight years of experience, so I would want to make those people whole as soon as possible, if not immediately. There's thirteen percent that have eleven to twenty-one years of experience, and if we get these good scenarios you're talking about, those would definitely, as Jamie Lynn said, working backwards, get them as fast as possible. And then there's twenty-three percent that have six to ten years of experience. So that's all forty-seven percent of our workforce, and we need to get them whole as soon as we can get them whole.
So, I think those numbers are somewhat different than we would calculate, because this is a turnover chart, the total numbers are right, and if that, if you're using the left column to calculate it, that, that might be accurate. But I think what Director Laverie Wright was suggesting is probably the right place to land, which would be to approve the schedule. I think even the teachers that have the greatest concerns about the leapfrogging phenomenon, and, and, and the, the idea that we're now at a point where we can get, get to, we've never been there, but we can get to steps equals yours, even they see that the schedule is a good. And in terms of transparency, clarity, and predictability, the schedules are great, because it's, because it's very linear. If the board could get us moving forward on the schedule, and then direct us to model repositioning options, we can absolutely have that done and, and bring that back for you. We won't have final numbers, and the reason is, as Dr. Trautemberg has pointed out, we don't have all of that historical data. Because this direction, we're actually going to end up taking care of people who were capped when they joined the district fifteen years ago. So this is a tremendous, this is a tremendous lagging benefit for those teachers, who have stayed with us. And so, if you, if you can move the schedule forward for approval, that's the thing we have to have to base our budget on, and then give us a direction to model these, so like, I think we've got the work backward scenario, we've got the close to retirement scenario, we've got the, you know, move everybody half the distance in year one, year two scenario that I, that I, we can model all of those scenarios, as long as you're willing to tolerate some imprecision, because we don't have a full data set of all their years of service. We have a partial data set, because some of them were hired three or four business systems ago.
I don't even think it's fair for you to have a final answer now. We need a commitment that we, as a board, expect that there will be a process to make people whole. What the details of our, that, of that process are probably going to take us six months to a year to figure out, just like this did. But that's, you know, with us keeping it in front, and with having some information, we may be able to do it sooner, but we have to be honest with everybody and transparent, and saying, it's going to take us time to do it, and it's not going to be fair to expect you to do it in two weeks.
I'm, I'm not going to ask anyone's permission on this, Ms. Thompson, I'm just going to make a suggestion, and you can reject it if you want. We've got some really smart teachers in this room that were in this process, and they are absolutely as knowledgeable about this, and, and if there are some that would be willing to just respond back to what they're hearing, they might say, boy, that, that sounds better than I was hoping, or that, that still is really, really problematic. I, I think if you've got, just like I asked Dustin to come up, if you want to hear a teacher perspective, obviously, we're not asking them to represent all teachers, because that wouldn't be fair, but I think some of our, our teachers in the room are so knowledgeable, and they're so credible, that hearing from them after this extended conversation might be really insightful, if, if you wanted to invite. I know that's really bad board governance and Robert's Rules protocol, but I think it's good cultural protocol.
Well, I think it's really important to hear the voice of the workforce, and that's something that we emphasize here. And it would be good to see the actual percentages, not on the turnover, but the percentages of the people who stay, and who have stayed.
I sent that to you all on an email.
Okay, okay, yeah. And so, Director Hile?
Yeah, so, I want to first point out to everybody that when I campaigned for this seat, my number-one priority was supporting teachers, because the teachers are the ones who deliver the outcomes for our students. And what I'm hearing, and I just want to restate this in kind of simpler terms, and Mr. Hilt, so you can correct it if I'm getting any of this wrong, is that number one, every single teacher is immediately and measurably better off under this schedule. So you're going to get a significant pay increase. Number two is, although the leapfrogging phenomenon does, you know, exist, it only becomes realized when they hire somebody into your building that is at your, you know, experience level, and is getting more. Anywhere in the district, okay. Thank you. That's why I wanted to be corrected. So, if somebody gets hired into the district at your level of experience, and they're getting paid more than you, there is a mechanism that is already built into this system, before we even talk about anything, to make you whole. Is that correct?
It's a new mechanism, because in the old model, as I said, we suppressed the new hire, and what we're suggesting in the new model is that we would raise the current employee. So it's kind of the inverse of the existing model.
Right.
And we don't have the math built for that, but we believe, first you have to build the framework, and then you can solve for scenarios within the framework.
So, but I did hear that there's a reserve for that, and there is an intent to make that happen.
You did, yes.
But yes, you know, because we can't really predict who we're bringing in, it's very imprecise.
It's a known unknown.
Right.
Mr. Anderson?
If there are members of that teacher-pay working group that are, that are willing to step up, I know Melissa's here, I, I just, I think it's good for the board, if you want to tolerate that.
Hi, Board. Yes, I actually have another member from the committee, sitting there on my phone, texting me, watching you guys live. I'm sorry they weren't able to make it here. I think the concern is, this whole leapfrogging, as you heard from my thing earlier, if there's a way to make it whole, and to put it down in writing, and to make a commitment when we push this forward, I think that would alleviate a lot of the stress on our teachers, like maybe say something like, before we raise this base again, we are going to commit to making it whole this way. You know, something of that, that kind of commitment from the board to our veteran teachers would speak volumes on how we value, how you value our teachers and workforce.
I have to say, oh, sorry, Mary Lucie, also on the VCT Falcon High School, I don't remember any time a veteran teacher has been put first. We're usually asked to just wait, or to just deal with. That was just wonderful, that was just wonderful. I will say, I don't want to cut my own nose off here, but I will say, that in looking at the BS teachers, the very youngest teachers, I think up to five years goes back to step one. There will be a lot of leapfrogging, right? There will be many teachers that we get that are not first-year teachers at the BS level. So that might be a corner we need to look at now. I think we need to put people in spots, and count them up, and see really what's what. That this is a big process. I appreciate you guys looking for solutions, very much.
So I just need to get an idea on a board consensus about, as far as moving this forward and directing the administration to look at maybe making the, modeling the more experienced teachers, and making teachers whole, just as we gather more data. But I think what I've heard consistently is that we're looking at really honoring our veteran teachers, and honoring all of our teachers. So, I just want to get a board consensus on moving it forward, and looking at modeling some of the formulas that we've discussed tonight.
May I make a suggestion?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we could get a little closer before we start moving something forward, because that makes it go very fast. And we need to slow down and make sure that these veteran teachers, these people from six to twenty-eight years, are made whole as soon as possible.
Actually, we're going to be doing both, and so, if we don't move it forward, we can't move, move the pay increases forward for everyone, and then look at solutions for making people whole. Director Laverie?
So my, my suggestion on that consensus would be to make sure we're explicitly stating what we know we're already required to do by law, was, which is, that the equal pay component be explicitly stated. D-20 has that statement, I believe someone sent it to me in one of the emails, on their pay scale, what they're really doing is stating what they're legally required to do, but because we don't have that legal requirement stated on our stuff, the perception is, we're not doing it. So I think, moving it forward with that statement, with also a statement of the board commitment to make current employees whole, that a plan will be developed to make current employees whole, based on modeling that will be presented, but we know that's going to take you time to figure out. Do you, so, does that make sense, making sure we add that caveat to what your consensus question was?
May I just suggest, split the two things, have, have, have two decisions, make a decision whether or not you're going to move the schedule forward, and then make a decision to task us with modeling a variety of options to do, we'll do the best job we can about costing them, and we might even have time to get some sense of teacher support, or concern, or, or objection, before we discuss again. I can't promise you that we could have that a week out, but we could certainly have it by Monday or Tuesday before the, well, so it's, it's a work session, or it's a Wednesday schedule, excuse me, a special meeting on Wednesday. We could probably have it that Monday. We'd still be inside, you know, we'd be in front of the twenty-four-hour notification requirement. But I would just suggest you split the two things, start with the schedule, determine whether you've got consensus or agreement to move that forward, and then give us clear tasking, and I can give you some language for that tasking, if you'd like, but I'd suggest you split the two.
I have a consensus for that, okay.
So what he's suggesting is first ask for consensus to move the schedule forward.
Do I have a consensus to move the schedule forward? And an agreement on tasking?
Then, then something like, do you have consensus, and this is, you can be a little bit informal, and just say, sort of like, so agreed, or something. Please direct us to model repositioning options that recognize proximity to retirement. that recognize proximity to retirement eligibility, that recognize longevity and loyalty by cohorts, I think, that recognize the delta, which is the, the gap, the delta between real and positional service credit. Does that all make sense? Okay. Am I missing something, Paul or David? Sorry. So I've said three things, proximity to retirement age, loyalty, longevity by cohort, delta between actual service years. Now, I, I'll say this here because teachers were really going to need a better data set. We had, we had 490 people respond, and we believe all those responses are good faith. We haven't done a validation process. That'll, that'll probably clean and polish a little bit. But I would really need to ask to get, I would rather not be projecting the other 400 staff. I'd rather be calculating the other 400 staff. But in order to do that, in order to do that delta calculation between positional placement and real service credit, we need better data from our teachers. Am I missing another way of modeling the repositioning? These are three alternative repositioning models. And we can just, I'll, I'll just tell you, we can bake in a time scale. We can show you proximity to retirement in year zero, year one, year two. Delta to real to actual in year zero, one, and two. And you're right, somebody said that might mean that we don't move the base next year. And that's appropriate. It's perfectly appropriate for you to tell us that repositioning should be a higher priority than moving the base because we already got into the 50s. You know, the next challenge will be getting to the 60s. So this year we had clear priorities. I started out with those like two hours ago. 100% appropriate for you to say, next year, your priority is, is repositioning. And here's the model we pick. Dr. Trottenberg, go make it happen.
And another model that might be worth projecting too is if we don't do repositioning because then that allows us to influence the base more. And that's a rising tide that lifts all boats.
So I'm, I'm happy to take that, take that direction. I just want to be fair to the people that are going to have to work overtime between now and then to generate that. That's Spencer, that's David and Paul. I'll be on the side delivering coffee. But we aren't going to be, we're not going to meet a level of, a super-high level of precision, but we will absolutely give you a range of probable costs and impacts.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Anderson?
I do, thank you. In case I misheard, I heard consent to move the schedule singular forward. We have the other schedules as well. So I just want to make sure we're moving those as well.
I have a question. With the, the admin pace schedule, are there opportunities for leapfrogging with that schedule as well? Or is that just for the teacher pay?
It's just this schedule this year. So I, I, it may be worth, so it, it will not happen in the other schedules. We have, there are mechanisms built into those schedules, which is, was the case with the schedule that we're working with right now. That formula at the top that does the algebra, our team, it ensures that that hasn't been happening.
We will, we'll retain for one more year the suppression model to prevent leapfrogging.
Well, I just wanted to-
So do you, do you want to re, so that Paul's not anxious about it, do you want to reword your request for consensus to move all the schedules forward for action?
Do we have a consensus to move all the schedule forward? Okay, yes. And I wanted to take a minute to thank everyone to show, for showing up tonight. I know this is your livelihood, this is your life, and this is your family. And just know that we do want to find a way to pay you more and make it sustainable. And I hope you got that message tonight. You're important. And so there's no perfect solution, but I really believe that the board is united in finding those solutions and to get your input. And so it's very important for teachers to participate like they have been and let your voice be heard, so. And then we're clear on the tasking on what's going to be modeled before the next work, the next special session?
I think I saw enough chins drop on four models, and I'll go back and watch the video to make sure I, I capture them correctly.
The first, the first three, so we're not overtasking our people who are working on the schedules.
So in order to do the first three, we actually have to build the baseline, which is number four, because that's the differential cost. So we kind of have to do that to make, to make those calculations. My apologies to CJ and Daniel for delaying them so long, but not really because this conversation will save us many hours of conversation in the future, and it's well worth our time. So thank you, Board. I appreciate your patience with us tonight. Thank you, David and Dustin and Paul and Spencer and the teachers that are here and the teachers that have been working on this all week. This is the only way we can get as much better as we need to get. So thank you for all that.
Okay, we are on to 9.3.
Lori? Quick point of personal privilege. Completely off different subject. A House Bill 1363 that you have paid attention to that has to do with charter schools did not make it out of committee, it has failed.
Good evening. My name is CJ Gelek, and this is Daniel Payne, and we are the group managers for District 49. So we're going to show you how efficient the facilities department is, and we are going to blast through this. So just to reiterate, this is our organizational chart. So we do have a couple of open positions here. One of them is on the grounds department, and then one of them is a safety, health compliant, compliance assistant. And then we would like to thank the board for their support in approving our lead facilities, equipment, technicians. So that meant a lot to us. That's going to be a huge improvement for us. So thank you all for your support. I appreciate it. And then looking towards the future, we'd like to add a low-voltage lead facilities system specialist in the near future, but we're still building that out, seeing what that'll entail. So we're hopefully coming out of the winter snow plowing months, fingers crossed on that. But I'd just like to thank a bunch of different teams throughout the school district. One is the grounds guys for their efficiency in removing snow with the plow trucks. The other is the district custodial teams. They work tirelessly to keep the sidewalks open, keep all the ramps cleared. We really appreciate them. And then the small engine mechanic and his team, they keep the plows going, the sanders going. And then lastly, we'd like to thank transportation because without them keeping our trucks maintained, we would be useless. So it's definitely a team effort, and we appreciate them. So we had a, our, on our facilities maintenance team, the teams work hard to evaluate the facilities master plan deficiency list and incorporate that list in the district's master capital improvement list. And then March and April is on top of all that responsibility is fire inspection month. So, or months. So we would like to thank Chantel, Hodges, and Tara Carey for their dedicated efforts to make sure that our schools are within compliance and to address any concerns that the fire inspectors find. So we appreciate those two. And then this time, I'll turn it over to Daniel.
All right, we're going to do some, the next four slides are going to be our school due key performance indicators. This slide shows that our grounds and maintenance staff have completed over 1,100, 11,800 work orders in the last 12 months. The amount of work orders is trending up, and we expect this number to reach 12,000 in the next year. This performance indicator shows the number of work orders per technician. We are tracking above the top 20% in grounds and maintenance. Grounds is tracking 59 work orders per technician per year above the top 20, and maintenance is tracking 41 work orders above. The high number of work orders per technician show our worker efficiency and the need to increase manpower. This graph shows the percent of corrective maintenance work orders completed in seven days or less. We are currently at 67%. That is 4% higher than the median, but 9% lower than our goal of 76%. The high amount of work orders per technician is a major factor in this number as well as aging equipment and deferred maintenance. This graph shows the percent of preventative maintenance work orders completed in 30 days or less. We are currently tracking at 76%, which is well behind our goal. But we also contribute this to the high number of work orders per technician. With that, we'll try to answer any questions.
Director Hile?
So one of the questions I had on the earlier slide, they had the, the low voltage system technician. Can you tell us what, what that translates to?
So currently, we have one person, his name is Doug, and he is our, the title is facility system specialist. So fire alarm, burglar alarm, card access, and there's like 10 systems. And so he's kind of our guru. So in the near future, we want to expand that side of the house because one person for 22 schools for all those systems and camera systems. I mean, we're getting close to having 1,000 cameras that's also part of this job. So that'll be something we'll be trying to get moving forward.
Thank you. And basically, what I heard throughout that presentation is we need to allocate more personnel.
Director Devola?
I just want to say thank you guys for continuing to make sure that our district is operating and that our facilities are going and that our snow plows are working and, and our kids are safe. It's really important, and I, I don't think you guys get enough pats on the back for the, the amount of work and labor that you guys actually do. So thank you.
Thank you. We have a great team, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And this meeting is adjourned.